Early at five or six. So Bob, maybe I'll start with you. And if you have any thoughts for how to craft our time on this tonight, most wisely and then Mike, I'll give you a chance if you want to add anything before you have to go.
Yeah, thank you, Alyssa. I'm going to start with Mike and I spent hours on creating the 10 pages or so that's a draft in front of you this evening. And it's been in that format for probably four or five, over a month now. And as Mike knows, we started with a stripped down model that at this point in time, I've come to understand was a deliberate move on Emily Cole Prescott, the planner at the time, move on her part to kind of force some discussion by the zoning ordinance review committee and by the planning board. Okay, let's strip this back to the bare essentials and see what the ZORs committee and what the planning board feels is essential to hang back on to those bare essentials, sort of flesh it out and end up with a well thought out standard for MPD. Never really happened. So as Mike recognized, hey, we've got really an unworkable stripped down version of something that might work, but it sure isn't going to work in this format. So Mike led the charge on hanging some meat on those bones. And pretty much that was accomplished by looking back at the earlier version, the old zoning ordinance and pulling the language from there. Both of us recognizing, I think, due to the the real world Flatley/Kimball Health Center experience that, you know, this language is here and yes, we can cut and paste it and use it to flesh out what we've got and end up with something better than what we've got, but it still might not be the best product. So over the past week or so, finally, it's starting to crystallize in my mind. And hear me out, I'm not saying this is the only path forward, but a path that the board might want to consider. What we got handed was, anybody here old enough to remember the Edsel? I don't really, but I know evidently it was a lousy design and they sold poorly and they didn't stick around for long. So I'm suggesting that the master plan development language that existed in the old ordinance and that we've inherited to some extent in the new ordinance is an Edsel. I think it stinks frankly, and I, I think the staff and board both struggled with it. Heck, I think those who were not excited about the Flatley project struggled with it. It is just not easy to read through. It's not particularly coherent. I think it gets into the weeds in a way that a community's initial look at a master plan doesn't have any business getting into. So I'm here to suggest that, does it perhaps not make more sense at the introductory master plan level to take a bigger picture, look at this and consider some of the questions to be asked as bigger questions, perhaps kind of comprehensive plan level questions. Is this what the comp plan says about housing or transportation? Or affordable housing? Or where commercial development ought to be? So I'm suggesting rather than get into the master plan that we've all been subjected to with the Flatley project where it had us jumping right into a whole bunch of submission requirements that bore an eerie resemblance to site plan review and subdivision submission requirements. They were the same dang thing. All of a sudden, we're asking for a lot of information on traffic, perhaps stopping just short of asking for a traffic report. We're asking for, I guess I'm speaking to repetition. The master plan development as it exists now is either a watered down or a steroided up version of master plan and site plan review. Whereas we already know site plan and subdivision are coming up. What the heck are we getting into that level of detail for now? So I think we've, what we've been handed is a self inflicted unfortunate 10 or 12 page document that proved to be cumbersome and unwieldy and difficult to work with, with the Flatley project. Frankly, I don't ever want to go through a debacle like that again. And I think a lot of the language in master plan development contributed to the difficulties that we all had with that project. Might have been a lousy project, might have been the wrong place for a project, but the master plan development regulatory framework sure didn't help. All right. So I've talked for two and a half minutes. Any feedback to that?
I would say that I agree with what you're saying, Bob. I mean, we just kind of inherited that. And then we had the stripped down version that's in there now. So what you and I worked on, got it, got it back to close to where it was, but having gone through it enough times, I usually can digest something and understand it. And I've been through this thing several times. And even our latest draft is a little bit confusing. So I'm thinking to the general person trying to follow it. I think that with all the minds you have on the planning board, you can especially with the experience you went through, could probably streamline it and make it, make it, make it better for sure.
Yeah, I'm, see, I'm asking for, again, if, if the language that we used for Flatley was kind of taken from the 1500 foot level. I'm suggesting, why don't we back out to the 3000 or 5000 foot level? Ask, ask some big questions. You know, what's the overall picture of where this project wants to go? How is it going to fit into the existing infrastructure, whether it's roads or sewer or water or electric or cable or natural gas? Does it, does it fit with the comprehensive plan? And not get into an awful lot more detail than that. It's crossed my mind that show us a locus, a locus plan. So we understand where in Saco it is. Show us an existing conditions plan. So we can see what's going on. Show us a sketch plan for what you've got in mind. And beyond that, I'm not really sure. But what I do know is that the, the language that we used for Flatley was just too, too deep a hole to jump into and expect to get much accomplished. I'm saying rather than raise the bar, let's lower the bar, simplify it. Focus on the bigger questions that are going to be important for, for any project. And, and let, let your staff and primarily that's me, I've gotten a start on this. Couldn't get it together for tonight. Think I can have it a lot more together for a couple of weeks from now. Don't, excuse me, Mike had looked over at Bedford to see what kind of language they might be using. As some of you know, they've got something going on. I think it's west of downtown, kind of a new village scenario. So, you know, a fairly good sized master plan type process. So that language was taken a look at. I've taken a look at some language that Scarborough has. I think we can just come up with something better, simpler. We won't have applicants scratching their head. What the heck are you asking that for at this stage of the game? So that's where I'm coming at this evening. I certainly welcome your feedback. If we decide to set aside the, the actual text of this thing aside, what might be interesting to focus on this evening in addition, or instead of might be areas, what, what sections of the Portland Road District might make sense to reintroduce master plan development to once we're ready to do that. And, and I think most of you who have been involved know that that was a big issue and that was a big issue well before I ever showed back up on the scene last August. And then speaking earlier with Alyssa and Dawn, density, density was an issue that Dawn pushed forth. You know, he still will mention this thousand square feet per unit. I think that's a thing in the past. I think that's history. I think we're up to three to 4,000 square feet per unit, but I think that merits some discussion too. So with that, I've pretty much said where I'm coming from. I'd like you to bear with staff as we do what I consider to be a pretty major rewrite. But I, my, my focus is really on a much more workable process. And I think it, I think it'll be better than what we've used in the past. So with that, Alyssa, I'll hand it back to you.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Back to the board and Mike. You know, we have you for another 10 minutes. Anyone have some more thoughts on this? Bob, I really love the direction that you're heading with this. So for what it's worth, I have that. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'm just a little bit. I agree that the, the, the format and the verbiage that was used in the first draft was extremely cumbersome to work through. It was not a pleasant experience as a board member. I don't think it was a pleasant experience for the applicant. And I agree, it needed a lot of work. I'm not so sure that completely throwing everything out and starting over is necessarily the best option either. Because we saw the difficulties and the challenges trying to apply an approval criteria to something that had never been really cranked through the process before. And I think that we learned a lot from that as a board. To, to kind of throw it all out and start over again, I think we could have a lot more unforeseen glitches in there. My kind of view is, is that there should have been three distinctive portions of a master plan development, three distinctive application phases. The conceptual review followed by site inventory and analysis, and then followed by the final, much more detailed master plan. And I think that concept to most people is pretty straightforward or should be straightforward. And if we could just stay on those three decisive steps and maybe take out the verbiage that says that, you know, two of them can be joined together, the conceptual plan inside inventory. Let's focus on them in my view as three steps. That sketch plan that you're talking about, the locus study, you know, and have a presentation on that and have a public hearing. So we've worked very clearly on the notifications. So they come before the, the board after a few exercises with staff and they present a conceptual plan with public comment and we kind of get a good feel of where they're going, give them some of our comments and feedback. Then they're going to start to have a sense of where the city is and decide, are they going to continue to invest in the, the design phase of this process? The site inventory and analysis that had a little bit more meat, a little bit more detail about what they'd be providing us for infrastructure needs, for traffic capacity of the existing roads. And I think if we kind of keep that process and not allow any of them to be joined simultaneously, it will really set the stage for their full blown detailed master plan that would, would kind of pull things together. I think it would be much more appropriate and for the community to digest and understand and feel engaged in as it moves through three distinctive steps. And I also think that it would help the applicants understand, you know, a very clear three step process before they really get financially vested, they, they would have those options and know where our concerns are and focuses. We had some very hot concerns on the one time that we went through this. Obviously, when it's applied to another zone, we're going to have hot issues as well. But I think that trying to stay with those three distinctive steps, making sure that there's community engagement at each one of them as far as like a public hearing. And in anticipating that they're going to get much more detailed plans and traffic studies or just shy of a full blown traffic study for the master plan. I think is a much better way to go versus just throwing it all out and starting over. And I'd be very hesitant about trying to now go and pick zones on the Route One corridor without having the tool, the, the process in place before and ready to go before we start opening up zones to master plan because we would be short sighted to say, okay, these will be the areas that will allow master plan, but we really don't have the application process all ironed out yet. And we're going to make people wait. And I don't think that's very fair to prospective developers in our community or that want to join our community. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
I'd make a couple of comments because I've got to run shortly to the meeting. I can hear what Jeff is saying. I can hear what Bob is saying. And I think simpler is better. I think with the site plan analysis, you probably want to have some follow up with a site, site, and I guess Bob would agree, the site plan narrative, and that's basically going to be, all right, here's the site plan analysis. And then the narrative would come back to you. And that's where they would have to address. Is there an issue with the stores, an additional with the water, the police department, the fire department, the schools? And if there is, what do you plan is to fix it? That's easy enough to address upfront to see if there's any, you know, if all of a sudden you don't have a school capacity, if all of a sudden there's a sewer line, that's the males will know that stuff right up front. Good for everybody to know that right up front. So I think, yeah, some of the stuff that we think Bob was going to use as a guideline, but trying to follow it the way that it was in 23416, it jumped all over the place and it was an extra process. It just gets you all confused. So I think, I think you guys are right on the right track to try to streamline it. And then you've got the idea that if whatever's happening on Saco Island, if something changes and it's not the 24 unit and they decide they want to do something else over there. Right now, the, the existing one has nothing on the books on Saco Island. So you might want to be thinking about that along with thinking about, I think Jeff, Bob can think about what's going on on the Portland Road, just generically, I think it, in my mind, opening the whole thing up is probably too much, but I think what Denise and Bob had come to is probably okay. But like you say, you've got to have something in place more so than what's on the books with that, with the, the today, because that, that never was vetted and, and it, it's not as good as the existing one. Not that the existing one is very good, but and that's what I have for tonight. So I'm going to run to another meeting. You guys have a wonderful evening. I'll follow up with Bob in the next week or so, and I'll watch the rest of this to see what you did. And again, I'll sit here for another minute and then I'll disappear. Have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, anyone else?
Madam Chair, Matt here.
Yep. Go ahead.
And I'll start off listening to Bob and Jeff. It, well, I don't 100% disagree with them. It kind of sounds good on paper. We haven't had a situation here as a board where we've been okay with less information. We always ask for more information. So I don't think, I don't think breaking it out in smaller steps is beneficial because we're always going to want more information. And then applicants are going to constantly be, you know, feel either being dragged along and I'm not, I don't know, I'm just not convinced yet that, that, that that's the way to go. Having experience on the other end submitting for master plan developments in other towns. It is very beneficial to make one full, complete application, one full submission. All your eyes cross all your Ts sort of thing and, and, and go through and make it happen. I think for developers and owners, I think it's going to be hard to add, add time and more steps to the process. It's sure it's going to add clarity. I think it's going to add confusion to it. Not saying our previous version was perfect. It was a little contradictory. But I'm, I'm not sure I'm in support of adding, adding less to the process or really fully reducing the information we're looking for because we're going to get there and then we're going to want more information. We, we just, historically, we always want more information. So that's, that's my concern here.
Thank you, Matt. Madam Chair, this is Joyce.
Yep.
I do like the idea of at least some preliminary conceptual review along the lines of the workshops that we've done previously. To have, have the developer come in initially with the concept just to, just to be able to spitball it for lack of a better term. So, so that they're not, as Jeff said, wasting, wasting time and resources if, if the plan is not going to come together or if huge issues are raised that they didn't necessarily anticipate. So I mean, I do like what's been proposed here as far as a hybrid, having the conceptual review first and before we have a full site plan review. Just pizzas here.
And the cat's not.
Because I hesitate to have people get too far into the process only to determine that, that there's vast neighborhood opposition and vast problems that they didn't anticipate. So I, I'm not sure I quite agree with Jeff's, you know, breaking it down into three distinctive steps, but definitely conceptual workshop at first before we, before we get into a gigantic submission.
I agree. I think, I think a conceptual workshop, I think maybe something more informal, Joyce, or you think a formal submission?
No, I think, I think the, I think the informal ones have worked well in the past. Where, where someone comes in with an idea because I mean, we've certainly had occasions where we've given developers very, I think, very clear feedback that, you know, don't bother with this or yes, these are the, these are the concerns that we, that we are raising initially. I mean, I realize usually we're talking about, you know, smaller subdivisions perhaps, but I think that's a good place to, to start to, to give, give them a little feedback first beyond what the, what city staff is providing.
I'd like that. I think that works. I agree. Almost an opportunity for us to informally give our thoughts on how we think a project as proposed or the idea could be successful. I, my previous comment, of course, I still think a conceptual thing is that, that works well. Master or site plan or subdivision, you know, that has been working. So I'm in support of that. This is how, you know, how much we break it up from there, if any, I just want to keep that back in my mind.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Denise, I know we have you on the call. Bob, I don't know if you have any thoughts on the feedback so far?
The conceptual makes perfect sense. And yeah, I always think it's valuable. A lot of times it's happening these days with the planning and development review committee where staff sits down with applicants, but the, then the, the next half step forward is to do an informal conceptual or sketch plan with the planning board and the applicant. And yeah, I think generally it's recognized, it's somewhat informal. Everybody's a little bit more relaxed. It's a first look. So the stakes aren't too high yet. So I, to me, there's always a lot of value in that. So I would see retaining that as part of the master plan review process.
Nothing further added, I agree.
And then, and I'm just gonna get into where I'm going to get into. Okay, we've got that, that whole 2,000 acre area of Saco, the, the whole Route One corridor. I think early on, the suggestion or a suggestion was if we're going to retain it anywhere, why not restore it to where the MU3 zone was north of Flag Pond Road and north of Cascade Road. I guess if SimCity, you know, I've heard about SimCity forever and I have never sat down and either played that game or utilized that module or whatever it is you do with that software. But it's always struck me as a kind of, it should be a planner's idea of having a good time because they can make this change and see what happens or make that change and see what different happens. If we're going to apply something of a concept like that in Portland Road and kind of dabble and get back to the, the nodes, the node concept that was talked about, I guess, in the first year of the ZORs committee process. It makes a lot of sense to me to, rather than put master plan development to restore it in full throughout the Portland Road District. I don't know why the city would want to do that. It makes a good deal more sense to select one quadrant or one cluster of parcels or one three quarter of a mile stretch of Route One, east side, west side, take your pick. So, so if it, if board members don't feel it's premature to talk along those lines, I'd be curious to hear what you got. You know, try to keep, try to keep the potential master plan development projects south closer to, closer to downtown, closer to the Main Street I-195 level of development. And just hop across I-195 and tackle that first stretch of Portland Road. Or do we go halfway up and select east side or west side? Or do we go all the way up to Flag Pond Road and Cascade Road and dabble with something there? I'm curious if you have any thoughts.
Denise, I see your hand up.
Thanks. So this is where, you know, clearly people know my position on this, but from an economic development perspective and from looking at a holistic perspective, I mean, the primary reason why the staff, you know, six, eight, nine, 10 months ago was looking at the entire Route One is we were not feeling really good about being in a position of what I would call cherry picking where this development would go based on landowners that had approached us saying, well, we want to sell our property. We have a master plan of concept that we're thinking about behind Gallo Chevrolet or behind such places. But I think to just pick a section like basically a quadrant around Cascade Road, Flag Pond Road, does that make sense? Sure. But does it make sense to exclude other properties as you go south along Route One or what have you? So I think I hear you loud and clear that you don't want to just open up the entirety of Route One north. But that said, I think we need to be a little bit, what if we're going to be judicious about where we're going to locate it? I think we need to have a conversation in a workshop saying, we've had conversations with developers that are looking at this area, this area, this area. And does it make sense to have this area, this area, this area without disclosing what those projects are, who's doing it and what it is that's going there? Because that you know, they have every, every right to appear before the board for a site plan.
you know, we have every every right to appear before the board for a site plan review. And but but we need to have a greater conversation for not going to do the entirety. And I think the entirety of Route One was just to be equitable with folks that were thinking about selling. And, you know, the fact that some of them were originally in the business and then industrial, depending on the location. And how do we make that happen? We're hearing loud and clear that people don't want the density in the downtown. There's very limited land. But if you don't want density in the downtown, where do you want density? So we need to have that greater conversation. And so and then the percentages, obviously, of residential to commercial use in these MPDs. And so there's a lot to grapple with, right? And so I want folks to understand that whatever decision gets made. You know, this is what Saco is going to look like, where people will be coming forth, you know, with with contract zones and the like. And so I have no no vested interest in one way or the other, other than we need to get back to these folks and what's it going to look like for Saco? So that people are either going to come here in droves or walk away in droves. And so we need to take a look at that. And like I said, for example, if we don't do around the Gallos area, those folks are are willing to come in with a development that includes, you know, a tremendous amount of business, you know, economic boost and as well as some residential. But, you know, there are other areas that we have discussed as well. So I just want people to think about that.
Thank you, Denise. Any other comments?
Madam Chairwoman, if I may. Alyssa, I'm going to steal your thunder a bit and just recognize Jennifer Day, our new board chairman. Or excuse me, new board member. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you so much. And I apologize for for being late getting into the meeting. I had a pre-meeting mind expansion that collapsed and I couldn't find my my login information. So thanks for having me. And this is, talk about jumping right into the deep end of the pool. This is some really heavy conversation to to be a part of from the gate. So pardon me if I'm listening. I'm taking lots of notes and I'll add to it when I feel like I have something to contribute. But at this point, there's a lot to absorb.
No, thank you for joining us. And yeah, this is a heavy topic, and I agree with Bob on this one. This topic, to me, also kind of I can think about it more clearly when we're not in the middle of a meeting. I think it's one of those things that probably all of us think about outside of our time together, and it will continue to evolve.
So I will say that it's hard to get it right. You know, you work so hard to focus on getting it right. And in my in my past, I served on the council in Augusta, and we went through a similar scenario where we were identifying the Route 201 corridor that ran from Augusta North. And the folks that came before us didn't get it right, and it resulted in us doing contract zone everywhere. It was like, well, my neighbor does this, so now I bought permission to do this. And and they were able to sell their property for an exorbitant amount of money, and I can't because I'm, you know, just one foot over the line from from where that provision ended. So it does require a lot of input for folks to feel like everybody has some say in it. But at the end of the day, you really have to be ready to take out the marker and draw the lines. And that's not an easy task.
Definitely. Okay, so Bob. How would you like to wrap this up tonight?
Well, we got to find a way to stall for about 21 minutes here, don't we? I would say that for Jennifer's benefit, and she may be a light year ahead of me, but master plan development in Saco at least. Well, no, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna say in Southern Maine at least. A couple of examples that we've pointed to before in neighboring communities. What the town of Scarborough is doing at Scarborough Downs. Where the the master plan there is is just a mix of uses. Right up front, it's it's a given that is there's going to be some residential and potentially different forms of residential. Maybe some owner occupied, maybe some rentals. Maybe some single and some multifamily. But part of the overall plan is also commercial development. For that matter, there could be light industrial too, you know, assembly of components, say. Doesn't have any appreciable impact on neighbors. And it's a it's an occupiable activity. It's, how would I say this? There are jobs, so somebody could live on that property. Walk to work in the morning, stop for dinner on the way home and then and never leave the property. So that that's kind of the concept. The Rock Row project in Westbrook is being developed along the same lines. So in a way, you know, this is a little villagey type concept wherein this can operate unto itself. It's a neighborhood that kind of offers it all, so to speak, or at least parts of it all. Maybe you gotta go find somewhere else to get to a bank or to register your car, but but at least some of your needs are met there. Thereby, the need to jump in a car and dash off to work and to commute 20 miles is is gone away. Granted, maybe somebody else is jumping in their car 20 miles away and commuting down to your master planned neighborhood. But, you know, that's the way the world works. So just a little bit of background for Jennifer and perhaps for Jeff Grossman, too. Saco instituted master plan development in 2013. It literally was on the books for seven, going on eight years, until it was used for the first time in in what was the MU4 zone. And that was all about Ward Five, the the big Lincoln Health, Kimmel Health Air Center project, the Flatley Company, the apartments, etc. And I think some of what you've heard tonight is most everybody who participated in that, whether it was the board or neighbors who either supported it or didn't support it, or the applicant had a hard time with the the existing language. So at this point, we've overhauled that somewhat, and we've got a version of that for review. We took a look at that at the last meeting two weeks ago. I'm not sure we got awfully far with it. And then I've been babbling on a little bit about this notion of, you know, we human beings created that 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 multi-layered, complicated, perhaps overly detailed approach to a master plan. Can't human beings back out of that? Recognize it for what it was and and what it could be and come up with something perhaps a little simpler and perhaps a little more workable. But that arrives at some of the same goals. And and I think part of our challenge is to identify what those goals are. What do we want to accomplish with this master with this 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 pre-site plan and pre-subdivision layer of review? Do we want to kind of give it the comprehensive plan treatment? You know, bigger bigger notions of what this thing should be all about? Or do we or how do we want to handle it? So to me, I'm all about lowering the bar, simplifying and streamlining and just kind of oh, just kind of making sure that this kind of project early on before the the applicant gets into spending big dollars is a good fit. That the mix of residential and commercial that they've put together and the location they're proposing it in, the existing infrastructure and nearby neighborhoods, that it simply that it works. And to me, if it can pass, if it can pass that hurdle, then it's ready to move on to site plan and subdivision review, the the much more detailed technically oriented stuff that we're all more familiar with. So yeah, I'm just suggesting, eight years ago, the city saw a fit to introduce a fairly comprehensive, detail-oriented process with a lot of elements of site plan and subdivision review. And I I'm not sure the city did the right thing at that point. And I think it's worth considering a different approach. So so what we'll try to do for next time is bring bring forth once again, the the Ian version, so to speak, the 10 or 12 pages that is very similar to the old zoning ordinance version. I'm gonna bring home, bring forward a staff level version that tries to simplify. And all if I find the time, I'll try to bring in something perhaps somewhere in between the two, something along the lines lines of Jeff Brosha was talking about. Where we're not just tossing out the existing approach, but retaining what in staff's judgment anyway is the more critical stuff. And if board members have further input on what they'd like to see retained from the the current version, I'm all ears. And and I did, of course, hear Jeff's notion of, you know, a three-tiered approach, conceptual site inventory and analysis, and then a more detailed master plan. So that's definitely an option on the table. So there, now we're down to 14 minutes, Alyssa. How about another other input? I Jody McPhail, our council liaison is with us now. Jody, I don't know if you popped in 20 seconds ago or 20 minutes ago. But we're discussing master plan development and a couple of different directions we could go in. So I'm soliciting input here. Now's your chance.
Yeah, thanks. It was probably about two minutes ago that I popped in, had another meeting just before this, so.
So, okay, so you haven't had the benefit of listening to me blabber on here. So yeah, we're, we'll bring this back in a couple of weeks, well, well aware that the council had established a six-month timeframe for trying to resolve this master plan development. So I think we'll have at least a couple of options for the board to consider for the May 18th meeting.
Okay, and so Bob, that will be our next meeting, right? The 17th, correct, as well?
Yeah, that the on the 17th, that's, of course, the usual city council meeting night. And yes, I hope your calendars aren't already crammed because we have scheduled a joint planning board and council workshop for the 17th. Denise, if if you're listening in, I know that an attorney will be part of the mix and has been part of fleshing out what this is going to look like as far as an agenda goes. I think this attorney is going to do some training of legal or land use issues. Denise, how about that? An attorney and also somebody else, perhaps?
I've been on, I've just been trying to eat dinner while I'm trying to hold a meeting here, and I didn't want to have everybody enjoying my my vegetable dinner here. I I'm actually opening up right now as we speak, the agenda that just came forward. It's it's, let me just see if I can do share screen here. Well, I'll just read it. So the agenda has just been put together. The two attorneys that are going to be conducting it are Mary Costigan and Phil Saucier, and both are land use attorneys with Bernstein Sure. We're going to be reviewing expectations of public board members, FOA in brevity, conflicts of interest, bias and predisposition. The next item is jurisdiction and powers of bodies. The next one is application review. The next topic is master plan development and lessons learned and Q and A. It's anticipated that this takes about an hour and a half. And the packet, it's essentially the agenda and some a couple of items on the conflicts of interest and bias, and that will be circulated. And I'm hoping to have that put together. Isabel was also going to locate the city council's recent passage of the the Code of Ethics, I believe, Jody, I think it's what it's called for boards and commissions, and we're going to include that in the packet as well. And just round out the whole the whole training. It will be part of the council's packet, which comes out just way at the end of next week. And and then the item commentary. So we're going to create all of that. We hope to circulate it to you folks by by the end of the week, early next week. So you have that ahead of time.
Great. Thank you, Denise.
Yeah, our packet normally comes out the Thursday prior to our meeting. So the full packet for the 17th would be issued on late Thursday, the 13th. And then if we have something earlier to get to the group. But as far as the actual council packet, that would be available on the 13th.
What time is that kicking off?
We're first on the agenda after, you know, public comment and that, and the council meeting starts at 6:30. So I anticipate potentially by 7:00 it would be starting.
Yep, this is the first item.
Okay.
And it would have been done earlier, obviously, but we obviously had the budget is is the primary goal of the council here in the next couple of meetings, so.
And this is something that traditionally was written out that, just like we do the school boards, you know, like twice a year for the planning board to meet with the council. But over the last few years, it's kind of always just gotten pushed back. So we're really going to try to make an effort and focus for the two groups to be able to, at least twice a year possibly, get together, do these types of things and have a joint meeting to be able, so everybody's on the same page and any issues that need to be addressed. So it is something that going forward, we will be doing. And hopefully maintaining.
Year, correct, Denise?
Pardon?
I think we had one last year, correct?
Yes, you had a training last year, and the training last year was primarily focused on FOA and and some basic development review. But this is more focused on all of those items plus other handful of jurisdiction and the more more specifically geared toward board review. So and then I and I think, you know, and the other pieces for the FOA component actually qualifies for the council and any new board members as satisfies the requirement for elected officials.
Great.
Good. I I think it's great to get back to that. I think city code actually references that the board and council shall meet two times a year. I can tell you, there have been planning board members in the past 20 years who wouldn't recognize a joint planning board council meeting if they saw one. Years went by with no no joint meetings whatsoever. So this is a good thing.
Okay, so Bob, any other housekeeping items? We have a couple of minutes.
Nothing that comes to mind. You can expect the board can expect a couple of weeks from tonight, on the 18th, we will be bringing up Old Orchard Beach Campground. They've been, it's been hovering around for a good handful of months at this point. Long longstanding development. I mean, it's been there for decades. Finally, with the current proposal, they're looking to add about 150 more formalized campsites in an area where it's just been fairly informal tenting. So they, with that, they're crossing the threshold for a site location of development review, a main DEP permit for which the city has delegated authority. So that project will be subject to both site plan and site law review in a couple of weeks. Also, the, we're going to see the first commercial solar application in the city's history. This isn't the one connected with the the zone change request that came through the board a few meetings ago. This one's a little further out. You may have, perhaps the board saw an early sketch plan of this. Occupies about 80 acres. It's called Green Skies. And it's, it will be subject to both conditional use and site plan review. Also, to a site law permit that is being reviewed by the DEP itself. So those, yeah, that we've got an agenda's worth right there between those two, I think. So those, yeah, that, we've got an, an agenda's worth right there between those two, I think. Not to say we won't try to sneak in a couple more items, because we will. And, and I just want to point out to the board, and, and it may be that a board member or two is gonna address this this evening, but Madam Chairwoman, if I can, the, the three items that are on for tonight, we're starting off with the contract zone for 507 Main Street. The way the agenda is listed currently, the next item is the Camp Ellis Rod and Gun Club, and then finally, what is a relatively minor subdivision plan amendment for the Spring Hill Industrial Park. In discussing earlier, the idea crossed our heads, what if we were to, i- if the board were open to reordering the agenda so that we still start off with 507 Main Street, but then go into the relatively minor issue of Spring Hill subdivision plan, and then move on into what it, what promises to be a long discussion on the Camp Ellis Rod and Gun Club. So if the board would entertain that notion, I know there's a west, at least one person in attendance this evening who might appreciate that, because he does need to speak to the Spring Hill situation, but he has nothing to do with the Rod and Gun Club. So, up to the board, I appreciate your consideration on that.
Great, thank you Bob. And Denise, I see your hands up.
I just wanted to add that so far, that what was presented by the city administrator's budget to split the two departments is actually going to happen. And so, effective July 1, there'll be a department of the Planning Department and the Department of Economic and Community Development. So when you see me participate in meetings, it is not gonna be any longer as director of this department or any oversight on this board. It will be as an economic development advocate. And so I think the effort for that was, the focus has to go back to economic development. And, and first and foremost, and that when I present things at the planning board, there's no confusion as to what I'm advocating for. Because it's hard to flip roles, I should say flip, to shift the role from, you know, being an advocate for economic development and it being misconstrued that I'm actually doing something I shouldn't be doing when I'm, I'm presenting at the planning board. So, anyway, so that's what's happening. Isabel will remain as a, a shared position between the two departments. And serve, you know, with the Economic Development Commission, but primarily, her role will be to support planning, more so than economic development.
And Denise, it is, is the planning office still on course to add another position in the new fiscal year?
Unless there's any opposition next week when they take action on the budget, it's on course to add an assistant planner. It's also on course to actually have an overlap for when Bob does leave, to have an overlap with the city planner. And so the primary goal will be to try to make that happen sooner than later. And then, effective July 1, when the funds are available, then they will advertise for an assistant planner. Challenge with office space is a big thing, but we, we have to work through some of those logistics. But that's, that's where we're headed.
That'll, that'll be a wonderful thing, people. I, I like to, the way I like to say it is, Saco is Maine's 10th or 11th largest community. And the challenges of day-to-day planning are just beyond one person, and in my opinion, have been for a few years. So the fact that they're gonna bring on a second professional planner, I'm, I'm just really pleased to see it for the city. I think the city is in need of it, and I think they'll be able to put that person right to work, and they'll both be very busy. So glad to see that change.
And then the other, just quick thing is, is that the TIFs, TIFs, tax and financing budget is going to be able to pay for a prorated portion of Bob's and city planner salary, prorated portion of Isabel's salary and a prorated portion of the new assistant planner. And now it's shifting 100% of my salary, because now it's only 50%, because I was planning and economic development. 100% of mine and 100% adjustments and operations will be added to it. And so it's actually a net savings to the general fund of about $29,000, plus or minus, to actually create a new position. So it, it becomes a very advantageous situation all the way around. So, that's for those who like the number crunch, like me.
Wonderful. Okay, I have 6:30, Bob.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so I'd like to call to order our Tuesday, May 4th, 2021 regular meeting for the City of Saco Planning Board. Members in attendance tonight, my name is Alyssa Bhutat, and I'm serving as the chair this evening. We have board members Matt Prebenkel, Joyce Larry Clark, Jeff Broschew, Jeff Grossman, and our newest member Jennifer Day with us this evening. Jennifer is taking over for Sean Nicholas, who served with us previously, and we already miss him. But Jennifer, we're really excited to have you with us. We also have Bob Handlon, of course, with us tonight from the Planning Department. We have Isabel Exley helping us coordinate this evening's meeting. Denise Clavett is still with us. I'm not sure how long you'll stay with us this evening Denise, but thank you. And we have Joe LaBarriere here as well from the city. And we are going to start first with the minutes of previous meetings. We have April 20th to go over, but I also just wanted to turn to the board and reflect back on Bob's suggestion as far as the agenda and how we're taking items this evening, to see if there's any.
Madam Chair, Matt here.
Yes, Matt.
I move to adjust the agenda and move item six to immediately after the reading of the minutes, and then proceed with the agenda from there.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
This is Joyce, I second.
Okay, thank you Joyce for the second discussion of the motion. Okay, hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. Matt?
Yeah.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff Broschew?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. So that motion will pass 6-0. We will move item six, which is the Spring Hill Industrial Park item to the first regular item on our agenda after the minutes, which we have next. Okay, thank you, Matt. So turning to the minutes of April 20th. Discussion by board members.
Madam Chair, this is Joyce. I move to accept the meeting minutes for Tuesday, April 20th, as presented.
Thank you Joyce, is there a second?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff Broschew, I'd second.
Thank you. Okay, without discussion, I'll poll everyone for a vote. Matt?
Yeah.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff Broschew?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Great, and I'll vote yes as well. So the minutes of April 20th are adopted, 6-0. Okay, so moving on to now what will be our first regular item. So this is the proposed subdivision amendment to the Spring Hill Industrial Park. This is map 58 lot 1-3. Map 42 lots 1-2-1 through 1-2-5 to add future right-of-way access and drainage easements. And the applicant is the City of Saco. The zone is PR and I, and I believe we have Joe LaBarriere with us tonight to go over this application. And Bob, do you have any new information to add that was not in our packet for this item?
I do not, and I would, I would look right to the city engineer for further information.
Great, so this item is starting on page 98, I believe, of our packet for anyone following along. And Joe, thank you for joining us.
I think the relatively simple thing, it's the same subdivision plan as you all saw and approved several months ago before the DPW facility was constructed. And if you all haven't been out, please come out and see us. We'd happy, love to have you all out there. But essentially, that, as you know, was a, is a, was a four-lot subdivision. Three of the lots were essentially, are available out there right now. The road was built into a certain point. It is a dead-end road that was planned to extend through to the Aduwe pile road in the future, let's just say. So the proposed changes are, there's a stormwater pond that was built across the street from the DPW facility, and, and after it was built, when we were looking at it, we thought it would be easier for future access if we had an easement along a, a portion of lot, along the sideline of Lot 2. So I think the three items, as Bob identified them, were to add a drainage easement along the sideline of Lot 2 to facilitate future act, access for maintenance of that facility. Some of you may remember when, and I think it was in conjunction with Maine Molecular, but as far as the Milburgh Business Park, at one point, there was a comment that was raised, I think by them, about how there was not a defined road right of way as it came out to Route 1, and it, it just kind of blossomed. It was all city land, but the road was kind of in, in the middle of it. That same sort of thing happened on this project. As you may remember, we acquired some land from the Cormiers to build Philip Springs Road out to Spring Hill Road. And again, there's another stormwater facility there, right next to Spring Hill Road, right at the corner with the intersection with Philip Springs Road. And that was just shown as almost like a broadened right-of-way, all the way out. We, again, were just kind of reflecting on that, saying, hmm, that, that issue came up from Maine Molecular, and I think it just had to do with the fact that there was not a defined road right-of-way all the way out to Spring Hill Road. So we were trying to not have that be an issue that comes up later on. I think it was a financing thing for them, as I recall. But either way, we were just trying to resolve and define a, a, a specific 70-foot wide right-of-way along Spring Hill Road, all the way out to along Philip Springs Road, all the way out to Spring Hill Road, all these spring roads we have here, so. That was the other change on the plan. And then the last one is, where the road dead ends, there's always the intention of the road to continue on, and how it was labeled on the subdivision flat before was just remaining land of the city as Lot 4. And so we just wanted to show the intention is there is a future proposed right-of-way across Lot 4 that would connect to the road that Aduwe file, right-of-way that they have come across. So those were the three changes. They don't change the number of lots, they don't change the size of any of the lots. That's really it. Happy to answer any questions you might have for me.
Okay, thank you, Joe. So board members, we do need to find the application complete, but also at this time, if you have any questions or clarification from Joe or Bob. Hearing none. Would anyone like to make a motion towards application completeness? Yes, Jeff Broschew?
Madam Chair, I find, I move to find the application for amendment of the Spring Hill Industrial Park plan to be complete.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
This is Joyce, I'm sorry.
Both of you at the same time. Matt, I saw you start to talk first, so thank you for the second, Matt. Discussion of the motion. Okay, hearing none, I'll call for votes. Jeff Broschew?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman? I think I heard you say yes, Jeff, it cut out.
Yeah, yeah.
Matt?
Yeah.
Joyce?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. So the application has been found complete. So moving on to any other questions, this is a public hearing this evening as well. Jeff Broschew?
Madam Chair, I move to open the public hearing.
Thank you, is there a second? Matt?
I was gonna let Joyce hit that one.
I'll second.
Second.
We'll give that one to Joyce. Thank you Joyce. Without discussion, I'll call for a vote. Jennifer?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Matt?
Yeah.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff Broschew?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. So the public hearing is now open, and I'll turn to Isabel just to see, I know we have a number of participants waiting this evening, but I have a feeling most are here for other items, so Isabel, if you wouldn't mind getting us started.
Sure, I will just do my quick spiel, since this is our first public hearing of the night. If there are any members of the public who want to speak on this application, just use the digital raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen to be recognized. I saw someone's hand go up, and then it went back down, but I think he is here for this. Steve Dupuis. Steve, you'll been allowed to talk, just unmute yourself.
Hi, thanks. I totally support this project. I work at the school transportation project, and we would love to see the build-out of the Philip Springs road area. And thank you very much.
Thank you. And Steve, can we just have your address for a minute?
3 Stacy Street, Saco.
Great, thank you. Isabel, I'll turn back to you if there's any other hands up.
I do not have any other hands raised for this application.
Okay, so again, any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, if you could just use the raise hand feature that Isabel described, give it another minute.
I have someone identified just as JC. JC, you've been allowed to talk, just unmute.
Hello, good evening. This is Jane Karen at 264 Lincoln Street in Saco. And I definitely am in support of this expansion of the industrial park. I think it's something that is needed, and it continues to help grow that area. And I think it's an appropriate area for, for that growth. So, thank you, that's all I need to add.
Great, thank you Jane.
I do not have any other members of the public waiting at this time.
Great, thank you Isabel. Jeff Broschew?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, is there a second?
This is Joyce, I second.
Thank you Joyce. Without discussion, I'll poll everyone. Matt?
Yeah.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff Broschew?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. So the public hearing has been closed for this item. Okay, turning back to the applicant, board members. Any other discussion, any other questions? Jeff Broschew?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Spring Hill Industrial Park subdivision plan per the enclosed findings of facts and conditions of approval dated May 4th, 2021.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
This is Joyce, I second.
Thank you Joyce. Discussion of the motion to approve. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff Broschew?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Matt?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes as well. So the amendment to the subdivision at Spring Hill Industrial Park has passed 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, so our next item on the agenda this evening is a contract zone recommendation for a multi-tenant commercial structure located at 507 Main Street, which is map 33 lot 2-1. The applicant is all regular. Um, the applicant is all regular S development. It's zoned HB. Um, and Bob, I will turn to you to see, I believe we might have some. I can't remember actually if we had some subsequent amendments that were given to us at the last minute for this or any new information, any new information. And I'll just remind board members that we are, uh, focusing this evening on reviewing this, um, and making a recommendation to council for a contract zone. So Bob, anything to add here?
Uh, no new information. Nope. Um, it's all in your packet.
Great. Um, and Isabel, I'm not sure if we can start the process of promoting whoever's here for the applicant. And just for the public listening in tonight, this item in our packet starts on page 21. Okay. And Isabel, I see you've promoted, I believe, three people. And Jason, I see you're unmuted. Okay, great. Hi there. So why don't we turn, um, to anyone here this evening from the applicant, um, and just have you introduce yourself quickly to the boards that we know who will be working with.
Sure. It's always, I'm always leery of having the attorney start talking. Jason Howe with Freddie Flaherty on behalf of All Rig. But connectivity from, uh, from, um, the, the Midwest can be challenging. So I'm, I'm here speaking for All Rig. So, uh, this is a requested contract zone. Most of the, the requested changes relate to the recent change in the zoning ordinance. Bob, I think has done a fantastic job of laying out based on what we submitted, uh, the, the, the changes. One relates to use and the other two relate to, um, parking in front of the building and then a, a drive-through pickup lane. It's not like a, not like a fast food takeout, but really a pickup for, for, for carryout food. Like we're seeing more with the pandemic. I think that, uh, we, we also have, um, the engineers on the line as well, um, who can answer any technical questions. Um, but I think that, you know, Bob's summation does a great job of laying out what we're requesting. Most of it is just in keeping with what would have been permitted before. Um, and the, uh, the use question is just for clarification, just so that there's no question. Given the new language under the, uh, the zoning ordinance, there's no question about whether the use is permitted there. Bob, did I cover that well?
Uh, extremely. Uh, it has con, contract zones go, this is fairly straightforward. It just addresses, uh, uh, few requirements in the zoning ordinance and, uh, board members, if you would like any more detail, either Jason or I can supply that.
Great. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Bob. Um, Josh and Heather, I just want to give you a chance to introduce yourselves if you'd like to.
I am the applicant. I'm with already. My name is
Ray. And then Josh Klein with Stonefield Engineering. We're representing the applicant. We're the site and traffic here on the project.
Great. Thank you for joining us. Okay. So board members, um, turning to you at this point, do you have any questions? Clarifications needed from Bob or the applicant? Um, as we start the process of the recommendation to counsel. Jeff brochure?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I was looking for, I mean, uh, most of it seemed pretty straightforward. And obviously driven because of the new zoning change, um, and basically to allow the use as it currently is in many ways. I wanted a little clarification on this pickup window. You, you know, there's no site plan, obviously, and they're talking about the northerly property line. And that the, the driveway would be within five feet of the property line. Is that something that would be basically extending the entire length of that north property line? Like between the building and, and the property line, or is it just going to be a, a shorter distance as they kind of turn in and move out, or just like a little clarification?
Sure. Well, I'm happy to field that one for you. Um, I, I'm not sure if you have before you the site plan that was submitted. There is a full site plan application that should be before the board formally at your next meeting. And I thought that that made its way into the packet, but if not, apologies. The, the pickup window, if you're familiar with the Pizza Hut location, um, if you look at the, the area between Pizza Hut and I think it's Dunkin's just, uh, just beside it, there is a pull-up like parking and drop-off area that pulls basically to the front of the building. The only change we would be making would be to allow that to be an outlet uh, into the, the parking area in front of the building. So it would have a, uh, it would, it would come up alongside the building and turn left and people would exit through the, uh, the area where, where there's a current, you know, exit lane right now. It would not run all the way to, to route one.
But it would run the entire abutting property from the back of the building. And along the property line that abuts Dunkin' Donuts to the front parking area. Is that correct?
It would. It would. It would amount to an extension of five or 10 feet from where it is now. You can't necessarily see it unless you're really familiar with the property or if you drive up behind it. But there is currently a driveline there already.
Thank you, Jason. Um, Bob, Isabel, I'm just curious if we are able to put up a, a, uh, site plan image on a screen share.
Yeah. Josh, are you ready to, are you ready to share by chance?
I am. I'm ready to go. I'll share it right now. Just give me permission.
You should be able to now.
Hopefully everyone can see my screen.
Yes, that looks great.
So this is the, the site plan. It's, I'm hoping was part of the package, but again, a kind of a colorized version of, of, uh, the site plan application that was submitted.
And of course, and, and Josh, if you could just get the board up to speed a little bit. Of course, the, the proposed building is roughly in the same location as the existing Pizza Hut building is.
Yep, exactly. I'm happy to do just a, a quick little run through. So hopefully, you know, kind of familiarize the board. Main Street on the left-hand side, Smith Lane across the bottom of the screen. Just being covered, that's that Dunkin' Donuts that was previously discussed. Above us, this is where Starbucks is. So we're really kind of working within the existing footprint, um, that's there. So kind of think a couple of important things to note, not a hundred percent pertaining to what we're asking for. But again, as we're kind of holding the, the parking along the front, holding the parking along, along the back, kind of keeping what was out there today in terms of parking, but we're really kind of sprucing the whole site up, kind of bringing it really enhancing it with landscape islands, new trees, um, kind of landscaping across it. But the, the idea of, of how this site operate is very similar to what's out there today. The building today is approximately in this location, there is parking in front. That pickup lane is here shown along, um, the Dunkin' Donuts property. It does have a, um, a bypass or like kind of emergency extra exit shot as well. Um, and it's not a, a drive-through. There's no speaker. There's no menu board. This is a pickup lane where someone would go to kind of pick their food up that was ordered online. And then we kind of have parking facilities in, in the front and back, um, as well. So we're kind of maintaining that access along Smith Lane. Again, no new access along Main Street, um, other than we're building a new ADA accessible kind of connection from Main Street to the building uh, with a, a painted crosswalk. We think it's a nice improvement for the site.
Thank you, Josh. Um, Jeff, do you have any follow-up questions now that this is before us on the screen?
No, thank you. It's, it's nice to be able to see the site plan and, and see that it's basically mirroring, um, what is, you know, currently there. I guess the, the other remaining question, I don't know if it's, you know, appropriate that I bring it up, but I'll, I'll throw it out there is, you know, obviously there's been some discussion about, um, the city possibly beginning, being able to have some access to the rear parking lot for the backside connectivity of the additional part, um, parcels to the north. I didn't know if anybody from the applicant was, um, in a position to kind of say that they might be in, in support of that sort of an activity. Or, or an option to the city at this point.
Sure. And Jeff? Oh, yep. Jason, is that you?
It is. I'm sorry. I did not mean to cut you off. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I just, I wanted to turn to Bob quickly too, and just say that this is, you know, you guys are joining us, um, in a longer discussion that we've had at the city level for many years regarding this particular site and just overall traffic flow and access. So Bob, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to this before we hear from the applicant.
Uh, I would just let the board know that, um, uh, just that sort of concept was perhaps first put forth by the 2005 Main Street Access Study. And more recently in both the 2011 and the 2018 comprehensive plans. You'll find encouragement from both those, uh, plans that the city, uh, explore and, and take advantage of opportunities that come along, um, to develop, uh, essentially, um, parallel roadways to Main Street. Given recognition that, uh, Main Street is, uh, well, hey, Main Street is why All Rig is in front of the board this evening. Uh, Main Street does 25 to 28,000 vehicle trips a day. Uh, it's why, um, uh, companies like McDonald's and, um, uh, Burg, well, formerly Burger King, um, but others, uh, want to be, um, uh, along this section of Main Street. So the, the comp plans have recommended, uh, busy route one slash Main Street section of roadway. Uh, the, to the extent that the city is able to work with developers as the opportunity comes up to explore, um, parallel roadways to Main Street, uh, the recommendation from the plans are do it. Um, and, and, uh, some longer serving board members might remember immediately to the south of, uh, Smith Lane here. Over a period of years when, uh, KFC rebuilt. And then when, uh, Bedford Saco Dental proposed a new building just a couple of years ago. Uh, and then, uh, abutting that to the south when Atlantic Federal Credit Union, uh, it was a different credit union at the time, a handful of years ago. But when those three property owners, uh, showed up and cooperated to work on a, a single contract zone, a rear access drive was a, um, significant piece of that from the city's perspective. Uh, those applicants agreed and, uh, collaborated on a, a, a joint thing that allowed an easement across their properties. Um, so today that's an access drive. It is not a city street, but it allows enhanced access for uh, customers and members of the public who utilize those businesses. So yeah, that, that's, uh, essentially what has been set forth in previous years by documents that tend to guide the board's efforts and, uh, the city's development as it moves along. Um, so that's what I would, uh, point out, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Bob. Jason, I'll turn back to you. I know you wanted to comment on this.
Sorry, I didn't want to jump the gun there. Bob, Bob had done a good job of explaining to All Rig recently, um, that this was out there. Candidly, it was a surprise to the company. So it was not something that we were aware of, uh, it was not something that the company was aware of in producing its site plan. I think the simplest version, uh, the simplest response, um, to you, Jeff, is the company's willing to work with the city to, to make something reasonable happen. But the problem that we run up against is that the purchase of this lot is contingent upon getting things through and approved on a particular timeframe to meet the requests of the key tenant that would be in the space. Um, I'm not sure if this is, has made its way around. There's been some speculation, but the key tenant here would be Chipotle. So if we can't meet our timeframes, the Chipotle deal doesn't happen. The property doesn't get purchased and we're not there to negotiate with the city uh, for, for the, the pass-through area. But what, what, what I think we can safely say is that All Rig, in my experience working with them, uh, both on, on their side and across them, has been manifestly reasonable about what makes sense for a space. The, i- i- in terms of a promise for what we will and won't do, it's, we only just found out about this a couple of weeks ago. So it's really early in, in the process for us, but All Rig has always, I think, worked with cities and municipalities to, to try and do something reasonable. So I think you, you're going to find a, a very welcoming year and, you know, they'll enter into the discussions, but, um, we obviously can't commit to anything. Nor is it procedurally the place to commit to anything, you know, right here. And of course, first and foremost is we need to get through approvals so that we can get the contract finalized so that we can close and get the space built. I hope that isn't too long an answer for you, Jeff.
So now, Jason, thank you. And, um, Jeff, I'll let you go. And then I have a follow-up question for Bob on this.
Yeah. No, I, I think that that's perfectly appropriate and I, I wasn't looking for a concrete answer. I think it's great that the year is open. Um, and I think to touch on Mr. Hamlin's point is, you know, the other agreements, particularly from, with clients being from out of town is, you know, the thing that draws people to our community is that busy volume of Main Street. Particularly in the summertime, if you want to keep, you know, a, a local basis of customer base flowing, having those rear accesses that are known to locals, it, it keeps your, your volume up. Because many people will avoid that Main Street corridor because of the volume of traffic. And, you know, it could have an inverse effect on the number of, um, you know, patrons you have in the course of the day during the busy season. So, you know, obviously we can't, you know, it's not like a strong arm thing. It's just putting it out there, letting it be known. And the functionality that could possibly be, be gained would be beneficial probably to everyone involved. Particularly when you think of the, the, the longer plan to connect on the northerly parcels. And it's just good to know that the, the concept has been presented. Um, unfortunately, our normal chairperson is not here and he's strong, has been a strong advocate of this for a number of years. Um, and I'm sure he would have brought it up. And I think it's just important that the, the conversation's open and I don't see that as an impediment. It's not a make it or break it type of a deal. Um, it's just good that the conversations there and hopefully as you guys look further, um, you may see some benefit in it as well. Those are my points. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, board members, board members, I'll turn to you in a second, but Bob, I have a question for you on this particular topic, um, with this item. Is there a way to weave this component in and a, you know, a efficient manner that would slow down the applicant on their timeline?
Oh yeah, the, the city has done this a number of times over the past, uh, 20 years. I've had a discussion with a representative of the, uh, representative of the applicants. I'm choosing my words carefully. The applicant is shying away from this a bit at this point. I evidently, timing is paramount to them. Uh, and evidently they believe this may slow the process down. It has not in a number of instances in the past with the city. So with that said, uh, I'm not sure there's much more I can add.
Okay. So Bob, I guess that answers my question because I was under the impression that there would be a way to incorporate this now while we have the opportunity, given how paramount this is.
It's been done several times in the past. It's worked, worked very well. It doesn't slow applicants down by as much as one meeting. Um, it's just incorporated into the, uh, process. That's been explained and the applicant has chosen to say, we'll deal with it when we're done with contract zone and site plan review. So I'll, um, that's my input to the board.
Okay.
Can I, can I add some to that?
Um, Jason, I'm just going to turn to other board members quickly and then we'll come back to you. But any other board members? Want to chime in on this at this point? No. Okay. Oh, Jennifer, I see you raise your hand. Yep, go ahead.
Sure. Um, so just a question, if it's, if it's not, not incorporated now, and, and I'm getting brought up to speed. Um, is this being my first meeting? In the subsequent communication that, um, was delivered to us today, that was my first awareness of the, um, the Goose Fair watershed that's in that area further back. Would that have to be part of the planning? I- in regards to adding impervious surface? It, it just seems to me like that's going to be part of the site plan evaluation. So if it's not included, it within this decision this evening, then it would add, and, and Bob can probably address my question better, um, that it would add additional time when that evaluation takes place.
Um, you know, probably Joel Laverrier can answer that best of all, uh, the city engineer. Um, you know, probably Joe LaVaria can answer that best of all, the city engineer. But yeah, what, Jennifer, what you're addressing is. This is in the Bear Brook watershed, which is within the Goose Fair Brook watershed, which is an urban urban impaired stream. So the applicant is aware of that. I know their engineering team is taking that into account in terms of the submitted information. A stormwater permit, capital S, capital P, as required by the main DEP, is going to be part of this application. Most likely, the city will be reviewing that under the review authority that is delegated to it by the DEP. That's what I can say for certainty. Joe is the expert on such matters. I don't know if there's anything you'd care to add, Joe.
Uh, no, I mean, this project, this project, obviously, there's stormwaters. They'll have to deal with a redevelopment site, which in the city does require. Quality control, which is. Per the ordinance, so they, they'll have to do that. They know that. You know, and I think Alyssa or the comment was, I know we've been talking a little bit about the the potential of, you know, continued access through, say, to Stockman. I think we would, in my mind, what I see is that kind of dovetailed with this development if it happens, and. I don't see it adding, it may reconfigure some things a little bit on their parking layout, but I don't think it's necessarily a a lot of additional impervious area. Once it leaves this parcel and continues on to Stockman Ave, then I feel like. That may be an issue the city's dealing with if it it becomes a, say, a city street. So I mean, I feel like we'll have to deal with stormwater ourselves. That's not something that. I think we'd be looking at this applicant to deal with once it leaves their property, but it'd be just what's on this this piece of parcel itself.
Great, thank you, Joe. Um, Denise, I see you have your hand up, and we haven't heard from you on this yet, so I'll turn to you before Jason again.
Sure, thank you. Um, so we, on the economic development side of this equation, have been working with the folks at All rig and. Staff attorney. And the client as well. And this mention of the right-of-way, the road access came up at the last minute, okay? They were not aware of any of this in the conversation. So so this this came as a surprise, right? And so the concern is, at this point, trying to work this part of the process into this application. Feels a little. Like we don't have enough figured out. If it was an easy, like you have precedence right now, the requirement between the convenient MD. And Saco Valley Credit Union, which never materialized, right? You had asked for that back access to the road. That never materialized. That didn't work. And so, and that was just between two landowners. And so now we're talking about a right-of-way. Or an easement across the Pizza Hut property. That will also need connections along the way with several landowners and to just. Kind of put those wheels in motion prior to the application. It it just feels a little cumbersome for the applicant, and I and I just need to advocate from an economic development side that. You know, get the business in here, have them, you know, get the. The issues resolved, the application passed, the contract zone, and then. We deal with with all of the other landowners and every other element of what we need to do to get that roadway and that access in. And I I can't stress that enough. So.
I guess my hesitation with approaching it that way is just that I feel like. If we have the opportunity to secure one portion of that, yes, very long stretch of more. Property owners that you'd have to work with, I agree, but if we have the opportunity before us right now to secure the first piece of it. Why would we not take that opportunity today, knowing that most of the board members here tonight remember the convenient MD conversation that? Yes, we were all told was going to hopefully materialize and looked like a great plan and never came through. And that was my question to Bob was. You know, securing the potential for this, not the finished discussion with all of the property owners on that stretch, but just the potential for this on this lot. How much time is that actually adding to this process? And are we actually slowing this applicant down at all? Or can it just be woven into what we're doing tonight and what we're doing on May eighteenth?
Agreed, so long as it doesn't derail or. Cause the applicant to just walk. And so, I mean, that's the one thing. I mean, it's it's like, it was never part of the original conversation when we had conversations with the business. And it came up like literally. Like at the last minute, okay, via an email. So so there there wasn't really any conversation in having. A forthright, hey, we've been looking at this for years now with the city of Saco, and and we should be looking at this. So I I think. To basically, from an economic developments perspective, to throw that in at the last, what I would consider the last minute from this point of view. And I'm not saying it's not off the table, and I'm not saying that we can't weave this in or make it as a. Anyway, I I just need the board to understand from from the applicant's perspective. That and and maybe Jason can chime in afterward when he can, but it it just seemed a little. And I I totally understand, this is the opportunity, we need to grab it while we can. Like I said, if it doesn't derail, delay. Or cause the applicant to walk, then fine, but but we need to, we need the applicant to answer that question, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Well, and I I think, to be fair, our role as the planning board this evening is to make a recommendation from a planning perspective. To the council, and then it gets handed up to the council, and that's, you know, they can do with it what they will, but. Just myself as a planning board member, I don't feel comfortable sending a recommendation to the council. Not referencing this major, major component that we've had years of discussion on. That if Dawn was here tonight, we'd be having, you know, a lengthy, lengthy conversation on. So I'm just thinking, recommendation-wise. We need to make sure the council's clear on where we stand on this.
Understood.
And I understand the economic development side of it is a very different.
So I just wanted to provide that, so.
Yeah. Okay, Jason, you've been waiting patiently. Thank you.
Sorry, I've been sitting here. So I just want to be clear procedurally where you're at today. The board does not have before a site plan application. It does not have before a discussion about what portions are going to be subject easement or not. The only things procedurally submitted to the board tonight as part of this process are the three requests for contract zone. So bear in bear in mind that we're not talking about stormwater runoff, we're not talking about site plan, although we showed it to help provide context. We're not talking about back access. The 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 legal scope of this meeting is limited, as a matter of law, to the three requests that we've made. So really, it's not, I'm not, I'm not trying to like, I'm not trying to get cute with this. It's a very, very new topic. Denise, really, and and Bob, I think we're we're trying to to put it politely. We found out in an email, you know, maybe a week, you know, ten days ago, after months and months and months and thousands of dollars of planning to put forward a plan that we have right now that does not incorporate. That drive. So even a couple of weeks of time to consider it gives us more opportunity. But from a purely technical standpoint, the only thing before the board tonight is those three items that we're requesting. So we're we're hoping that we can stay focused on that and and get through a recommendation or or, you know, not a recommendation so that the council can make its decision. The other thing that I would stress for the board members, too, is. We understand that you know this has been, you know, something in the background. It's new to us. The thing that the board has to understand is that we are. We fail as a negotiator. We're we're not a party to the conversation if we don't own the property. We have right, title, and interest to the property right now, which is contingent upon getting something approved. Without the approval, we don't close. Without closing, we can't grant any rights on the property. So if this deal falls apart, you lose the opportunity to to discuss with whoever the purchaser is, you know, at least our purchaser downstream. So when Denise is talking about losing the applicant. The 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 customer that we're courting for this particular space, that that Keystone user of the space, Chipotle. Has been pretty patient and is on board for Saco, has been trying to get into Saco for some time, and All rig is working with them to do that. But I would caution that pushing for too much too soon, when it seems like a surprise to the applicant. Is potentially detrimental to you in that if this falls apart. There's no one to negotiate with, because we don't have buying the property. So. So those two points, process and procedure. As for like the scope of discussions for tonight and what's properly before the board tonight and what can be voted on tonight. And then, you know, secondly, just bear in mind. All rig is a really reasonable development company as they come, and they fully understand that back access is a big piece of maintaining continued. You know, traffic to areas in otherwise crowded times, but none of that's lost on them. But this is also a process that's played out over months, and in the last less than two weeks. We discovered that there's a really substantial change that impacts stormwater, impacts traffic control, impacts impervious surfaces, impacts connectivity, impacts. Relationships with parties that are rebutters, impacts approvals and permits. It it's it's a lot at the last second for an applicant that is this far along in the process.
Thank you, Jason. I sympathize with you that this is something that was just brought up to you, because I think as planning board members, we've had our eyes on this parcel for years and years, so. Bob, I just, my last comment, I want to turn to you, and then I'll turn it back to the board, but. Yes, we are, we have a procedure that we're following this evening regarding making a recommendation to the council. My experience has been that while we make a recommendation, we can fold in a recommendation that some component also be. Included in this. Is that correct? And then the council can just know that that's something that we're looking towards?
Uh, oh, absolutely, yes.
Because at the end of the day tonight, this is a recommendation this evening that we're doing.
That's correct. Yep.
Okay, board members.
Madam Chair, Matt here.
Yes, Matt.
Um, I'm reading through the packet, and I'm I'm just trying to understand the three items. You know, I I understand them, but. Maybe, I don't know, maybe the applicant or Bob can e- explain them. A little bit further. Trying to understand the unusual nature, I guess, for me here, looking at past projects. That we've, you know, have gone through us, that we've reviewed. I I think the situation with parking in the front is, I I think they're kind of falling into the minority category of that right now. Especially since the whole building's coming down and it's it's an entire new structure. So I'm just, I'm just in my head. You know, trying to grasp that full. That's all.
Okay, so Matt, specifically to the uniqueness of the property, correct, is what your question is focusing on?
Yeah, I I understand. You know, there are some fast food restaurants around. I obviously know it was a Pizza Hut. I. Seem to feel that the other restaurants are, have accomplished a successful or seem to be working successfully. You know, meeting some of the criteria, you know, not having to keep the the parking in the front and so on and so forth, so. I'm I'm, yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm not grasping why this particular site is unique.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Anyone from the applicant, Jason, I don't know if you want to speak to this, or Josh, perhaps?
Sure, I'll 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 field that one. The the idea was to move as little as possible. Which is why the building's going back in the same spot. We understood that that was one of the overarching goals of the the zoning ordinance was. When you can sort of reuse and refurbish, refresh space that's there. So the building's coming down, but it's, anyone's going back up in basically the same footprint. And the the thing to bear in mind is that the parking as it exists right now would have been permitted until the new zoning ordinance passed and went into effect in mid-April. So this is, that that requirement as such is is new. And that the same for for the other conditions here, there being, for for which the the contract zone is being requested. Does that answer the question, Matt?
Uh, it, I I I understand your position, yes.
Okay, other board members. Anyone else? Comments, questions? Joyce, yep?
Well, yeah, and I guess to 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 Matt's point, too. Um, I I think one of the things that's unique or unusual here is that. We seem to have overlooked fast food restaurants as a permitted use in this zone. When we revamped the zoning ordinance. So this is really an applicant's only recourse unless we go back and do a zoning ordinance amendment. No fast food restaurant is going to be allowed here without a contract zone or a zoning ordinance amendment.
I'm, uh, Madam Chairwoman, if I could respond to that. Appreciate the members' contention. I wouldn't necessarily agree with that. I'm going to point to table three dash three. And as board members know. This is the table of permitted and conditional uses. In the Highway Business District, which is what we're talking about here. Food and drink are permitted use and. Drive-through window service is a permitted use. So it may not say, it does not say fast food restaurant. But what has been explained. By the code and planning offices is that if you put together a drive-through window with a food and drink establishment. You've got a place that you drive through, pick up your food and keep going. So it's almost a splitting of hairs there. I understand what we just heard from. From our board member. But could an entity show up and say, I want to propose an eating place with a drive-through window? Yes, you can. They're both permitted uses in the highway business zone. Point of clarification.
Well, thank you, Bob, because we we had had this conversation in my office with the, one of the attorneys in my office who will remain unnamed. But but you all know him.
Absolutely, and yes, I think. Yep, point well taken, Joyce. I, the fact that one can can flip to table three-three, find fast food restaurant, find. Highway business, bring your fingers together and what? Knowing full well, the mix of businesses that are out there currently, and the mix of fast food restaurants that are out there. Absolutely, it was an oversight on the writers of the ordinance. And it is something that is going to be corrected sooner than later.
Rob, Jason, I see you have your hand up.
Uh, yeah, just for a point of clarification, the Chipotle wouldn't characterize itself as fast food, but we, where we have to go through this process anyway. We thought that it was prudent and in the interest of time to include a clarifier, given what Bob just said, we saw the same thing. We just didn't want there to be a basis for rejection to the extent that somebody took a counterposition and said, no, fast food's not allowed. We think that's fast food, therefore, you're not coming through. So is it something we would have asked for on its own? Maybe not, probably not. But given that we had to come through on the other two items anyway, it seemed like it was just, you know, and after talking with Bob and staff. It seemed like it made sense to just put it out there to clarify that there was no question. To the extent that you characterize Chipotle as fast food, it would still be permitted in the zone under this contract zone.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm in one hundred percent agreement. Absolutely true.
Great, thank you both.
Madam Chair, Matt, yeah, I'm, I I think fast food piece for me, that that's not bothersome. It it's looking at the, you know, convenient MD, that was a contract zone. Be at the street. We specifically said, bring it to, push the parking out to the back. Same thing with a dental office, you know, this this is, seems to be the direction we're going, so. Not concerned with the fast food portion, more of the overall scope of, you know, the project. From there.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Board members, I do want to alert everyone that this was advertised as a public hearing, so. We will need to hold a public hearing for this item.
Madam Chair, this is Joyce. I move that we open the public hearing.
Thank you, Joyce. Is there a second?
My second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Jennifer. Without discussion, I'll poll board members. Matt?
Yeah.
Jeff Broschu?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
No, vote yes as well. So Isabel, we have opened another public hearing. If you'd like to join us again to help out.
Yeah, I'll just remind folks that are in the audience to use the digital raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen to be recognized. There are a number of people who put their hands up, so I'm just going to call them in the order that I saw them. The first person that I saw was Stacy. Stacy, you'll have to unmute in order to speak.
Yes, I this is actually not Stacy. This is her father, Ron Giles. And I own the property, the KFC property and Taco Bell property. And I'm kind of very concerned with this whole proposal. And Bob and I go way back as far as when we did the CVS and rebuilt our store. And with now with the dental office next to us, we weren't allowed to have, first of all, parking in the front. But that's not the main concern I have is that the access road, first of all, let me talk about, is that we all agreed to do the access road. And we didn't rush and we were not allowed to rush this project. It took us over a year to be able to tear our building down and rebuild a new one. CVS, if you remember Bob taught, I don't know how many years, they finally approved it, CVS backed out. Then the dentist's office went in and it took them, I'm going to say at least a year to get their project done. Now, the access road, if everybody goes back to less, less, we know it was Pizza Hut. But that road going through, or if I'll call it for a lack of better word, like unclaimed easement right or whatever, Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks has used that for years, okay, to try to shut that off now, okay? I I I think is unheard of. Then, and then saying you want to go and put this maybe continue it on. But kind of what I just heard is that they got to buy the property. If you're going to buy the property, you're going to have to deal with this anyway. The other concern I have, you got three businesses going in this one building, okay? Now, you have, excuse me, I pronounce this wrong all the time, Chipotle or whatever. And we all know for the, it's not public, but you know Jersey Mike's coming because they had their sign out there for one day. So in the retail store, whatever that'll be. Well, first of all, and I can't believe nobody has brought this up. Your first one with the drive-thru generates a lot of traffic. Okay, our traffic count in our store, okay, is right now about 500 to 550 cars a day, okay? Now, let's just say, forget the 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 COVID, COVID problem. And prior to that, 60% of our business was done through a drive-through. Now, I know the applicant is saying that this is going to be online calling and app, okay? Even though they have a menu board out there, but you're going to generate a lot of cars through that driveway. Now, with that said, when we're coming off of Smith Road, okay? Understand, the reason we did the access road of mine is so they can exit out on the light. Now, our people are going to be coming out on that road. They're going to make a left so they can go to that light. People that are going in to these three businesses are going to try to make a left. And we all know that when people try to make that left, they will block that road, okay? No question. And even if you had the access road, they would block that from Dunkin's and whatever. So we think it's a major traffic problem. It's just like if when they were dealing with the CBS and a left turn in, the city didn't want it because of all the problems that it create. This will create the same problem, okay? Because you've got two huge, major businesses going in there that will generate a lot of traffic. I don't know if any of you have been up to Jersey Mike's in Scarborough, they're very busy. And also the Chipotle, they're very busy, okay? And nobody's said anything about traffic count and what the traffic would be. It's nice to be able to get the project approved. Oh, I want it done ASAP. I I I've never known the city of the plain wood to do that. This trying to get this done this fast without doing, I think, a little more homework on this and knowing what was you're getting into. So with that, I'll close.
Thank you, Ron. And I know you mentioned the business you own, but can you just give us a street address for the record?
Oh, 491 Main Street.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person on my list is identified as Stephen Dupree. Steve, you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Hi, Stephen Dupree, 3 Stacy Street, Saco. I'm speaking in support of this contract zone. I think it would be a great asset for the area. And I think the rear access to Stockman Ave would enhance the project. Also, looking at the sketch, I'm wondering if you've thought out how you'd be doing snow plowing and snow removal in the wintertime? It looks like it might be a real challenge with that layout that you have in the parking area. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Steve. And I'll just note for anyone listening in tonight that this is the first step and we would be seeing this applicant again for a future site plan meeting where issues such as snow plowing would be discussed. Isabel, do you have other hands raised?
I do. The next person on my list is Neil Schuster. Neil, you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Hi, Neil.
Hi, good evening. Neil Schuster, 433 Ferry Road. Previous planning board member and previous planning board chair. Your discussion this evening is bringing back many fond memories of lengthy planning board meetings. Unfortunately, that that time was at City Hall. Starting back with the Main Street plan, talking about rear access all along Main Street, struggling with every developer that has come along on Main Street and discussing the rear access. So it it just brings back all of those memories. I feel for Mr. Giles and all of his comments. He was a very, I'm probably willing participant, is not the word. He certainly would have liked to have moved moved quicker with all of this project, but worked with the planning board and worked with the city to accomplish the goals for his property, the property next door and the credit union. And I think ultimately, I look at that as one of a major accomplishment on the part of the planning board. It took a lot of struggles on everybody's parts, a lot of patience on Mr. Giles. What originally was going to go there was the CVS and they had all kinds of, you know, you got to put parking in front because we need this and we need that. And if we don't get it, we're going to walk away. They got their front parking, they still walked away. And what we got in return is a much better project with a much better design. Convenient MD across the street, we got the planning board got pressured on building height dimensions. They got pushed towards the street, but one of the major planning board discussions was rear access. And the planning board was convinced on the part of many people, well, do a site plan and because we really want to get them in here because they're a great business. And then once all of that is done, we'll we'll work on the rear access after after the fact. You go over there now, there that building's been there a couple of years and there is still no rear access to that property. And I can tell you, I've watched a couple of times when ambulances and fire trucks have pulled in there for emergency purposes, trying to back out into Route One when the traffic is stacked at the traffic light and get out of there with an emergency patient. That still hasn't been accomplished. So now we have a new project where I understand, you know, the all the work that the planning board has done and the city has done with revision of zoning ordinances was with the goal of eliminating contract zone or minimizing contract zones. One of the first thing that comes along after the zoning warrants have been approved is a contract zone on Main Street. I agree very much with Matt with the question of what is unique about this property when the building is being torn down? And all the applicants says, well, if we don't get what we want, we're going to walk away. That really doesn't tell me that the applicants really were willing to work with the city like Mr. Giles does, was willing to do across the street. That rear access has been on the plan since 2005. Multiple comprehensive plans, it's imperative that that be incorporated in this. Just the fact that, well, Pizza Hut already had the parking out front, so that makes it unique. And we're just putting the building back where it was. That's what makes it unique. That wouldn't fly with me if I was sitting on the planning board at this point. To me, maybe an argument, if within the contract zone and the city has done contract zones where the rear access was discussed and that was part of the contract was providing that kind that access, then maybe that makes it unique and unusual. But tearing down a building and having a blank slate, nothing unique about that. It's just another lot on Main Street. Thank you.
Neil. Isabel, do we have other hands up?
Yep, the next person on my list is Nathan Johnston. Nathan, you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Nathan.
Hi, thank you. Nathan Johnston, 17 Elm Street. Overall, I mean, I I'm supportive of, you know, the project. But specific to the back access, I mean, I've been a longtime advocate for back access. I think, you know, previously we had opportunities, but it was, you know, the IHOP that went up there recently. And we we missed those opportunities. But I I know I know if Don was here, we certainly would hear more about it, given that he's really championed that for 15 plus years. And, you know, I apologize to Attorney Howe. As the back access issue probably should have been brought up really right up from the get-go by city staff as it has been a well documented, you know, thing that that many members of the community have sought. But I would say that it, when it rises to council level, it is well within purview of council to put those stipulations into the contract zone. And it is something that when it comes to us, I will be advocating for because this is the opportune time. Much as I did for the for the contract zone for convenient MD, the language in it is is kind of vague, which is why, you know, we don't have it with convenient MB. But I I do believe that, you know, at least at least securing the easement at this stage is is really what the city should be looking for. And when you look at your standards, you know, the the four standards that the planning board has to rule on, I certainly would be challenged with saying that you're consistent with the comprehensive plan when there's so many specifics to this back access. So, I mean, again, I think that it really behooves of the applicant to be more open to securing something for this back access on behalf of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nathan.
The next person I have on my list is just identified as Mary Ann. Mary Ann, you've been on, you've been allowed to speak just unmute.
Mary Ann, if you unmute and then give us your full name and address for the record, that would be great.
Yes, hi, this is Mary Ann Ryan. I live at Two Settlers Way in Saco. And as I'm sitting here, I'm looking directly out at the property under discussion. It's in my backyard. I have a couple of concerns and I'm hoping some of my neighbors are on here as well because we've been talking among ourselves. But one of the things that Mr. Giles brought up was about the traffic. And I've been stuck in that traffic before, trying to turn off of Route One onto Smith Lane. And there's cars going, trying to go into KFC and cars coming out of that lot. So I'm concerned that we run into the same problem on the other side of the road when that property is, when 507 is developed. It also concerns me that the entrance to the build to that property is going to be pushed back further towards actually our residential houses. And that part of the road, Smith Lane is narrow, narrower. So I'm concerned about a log jam there. A couple of other things I saw in the plan that concerned me are the placement of the dumpster, which is right behind the three of our houses that border that property. And would like to request that that be moved further away. Garbage has been a problem here. I picked up garbage from in in the backwoods areas from as far away as Dairy Queen. But all the neighboring fast food businesses, I end up with garbage in my yard. I know my neighbor does as well. So I it would be really helpful, first of all, to have the the garbage container moved further away, but also to put up a fence to be put up by the developer on the back side of the parking lot, bordering the trees, to kind of cut down on the garbage as well as noise. Because that's a pretty quiet property back there. I've lived here for two years and it's been really quiet. And so now to be talking about these two big businesses going in, it's going to be quite a quite a difference. I think, yeah, that's that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. And I just want to alert you and other members of the public listening in that we will have future public hearings during site plan review if this application continues to come before us. And at that time, we would be discussing things like garbage disposal and screening and noise and all of those items. Isabel, do we have other members of the public with their hands up?
Yep, the next person on my list is identified as Bob Berwick. Bob, you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Hi there. One of the neighbor neighboring properties, I'm also the vice president of the homeowners association as it's a private road. So I represent the 29 homeowners along that road. A couple of things, going through the the plans and some of the stuff actually came through late to us as well as the developers, and I can certainly understand that, having just gone through a development process in another town in Maine. And a couple of them, one of them was a statement made by Mr. Howe that said there was no impact on the on the rear residential property. Well, based on what we're seeing with the plans now and the concerns of the city engineer as well as the access to that road, there is a significant impact. I think Mary Ann just said it well regarding the the garbage that's coming from that property now was not being handled properly. I this spring, I picked up four or five garbage bags of stuff in that green space buffer between that resident, that property and the residential property. I I there's an issue, obviously, it's not going to be dealt with today, but stormwater is a concern of the city engineer and myself of there was stormwater being fed down through the Settlers Way watershed coming down through there. There's a current erosion on some of the property owners' properties now that about that. That I'm not sure if the city is aware of it yet, but they will be aware of it soon. And then also, you know, the the city fathers and mothers, you know, city council approved the change in the zoning ordinance on behalf of the city. And they felt it was the best thing for the city. I don't see anything in this plan. I don't see anything in this plan that should be changed. They shouldn't be given an exception. They can either live within the footprint they have and make it work. Or maybe reduce the size of the building. I'm sure the, the three businesses going from one to three is a effort to maximize their profit. And I don't begrudge them for that at all. I do have some concerns. I, I'm going to say, I know we're going to talk about it in the planning board. In the project review, but good fences make good neighbors. I think the city ought to put a stop to this. As far as timing, it doesn't need to be rushed. The city needs to develop that, the idea of the access road in the back. Just because they're afraid of a business may walk away. That's part of business. Businesses do walk away. I'd like to have a conversation with the developer and even their attorney, if he'd like to be involved. If they want to reach out and contact me or give, give me their contact information, I'll be happy to express our concerns and, and hopefully we can work out something that makes them an acceptable neighbor to everybody in the city. I don't begrudge businesses, I don't begrudge whatever you want to put in there. Being much nicer if it was a bank or a doctor's office or something like that, people go home at five, six o'clock at night. But I, I, so, long and short of it is I have a concern with the, with their waste plan. They're moving the road towards the back of the residential property line. That impacts the neighbors. The statement from the applicant says it doesn't. So that, there needs to be some conversation there as well. But I, I, I think some conversation needs to be had before it's allowed to go forward. The reason why you have setbacks on things like that is because clutter and cluster and everything like that, access, emergency access. The road is not designed to handle the traffic that these two businesses will bring in here. And it's only going to be a matter of time before emergency vehicles or the tenants and the hundreds of units that are now in Smith Lane. Can't get to their homes because of somebody getting a fast food sandwich or something. I, I, I think the, the planning board needs to review that and go back with a recommendation to the city council of no to the contract zoning.
Thank you, Bob. And you cut out at least on my end at the beginning, could you just restate your address for the record?
It's for Settlers Way.
Perfect.
So basically, if you looked at that map that the developer put up, that dumpster container setup would be, you know, sixty feet in my backyard.
Okay, thank you. And again, as a reminder to the public. Some of these issues that are great points that you're bringing up tonight, we will be handling during site plan review. Isabel, do you have another member of the public with their hand up?
Yep, the next person on my list is just identified as JC. JC, you'll have to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hi Jane.
Yes, hello, hi, it's Jane Karen, two sixty-four Lincoln Street in Saco. And it's certainly important for the city to consider the parameters of contract zoning, safe traffic and so forth. And it seems obvious, this back access street, I don't know all the details, but you know, it's a concern as well. I personally have used Smith Lane. I think the more access that is available now with Smith Lane is helpful to me. However, overall, there's been a lot of talk from citizens in support of this development. Right now, it's a bit of an eyesore and the, the proposal that I saw this evening definitely looks as though it's a very attractive business and hopefully they'll be able to work on any site plan review issues with neighbors. But overall, I think with proper traffic situation, traffic lights or whatever. I think it, this proposal should be going forward to that site plan review time. So I'm in support of letting this go forward. And if it does mean it has to go a little bit more quickly to, to support that development there, that's what it's built for. I, I think it should go forward. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you, Jane.
So I don't have anyone else with their hands raised at this time waiting to speak. I've sort of said that to give people a moment to put their hands up if they wanted to speak.
Sure, and Isabel, while you're warning everyone, board members, any questions, comments you'd like to dig into while we give the public a little more time to get their hands up? Okay, Isabel, do you have any other?
I don't, nobody else has their hands raised.
Okay, Jeff Broschu.
Madam Chair, I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Matt with second.
Thank you, Matt. Without discussion, I'll poll members. Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jeff Broschu?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. So the public hearing is now closed for this item. And turning back to the board. So again, just as a reminder, our, our primary role this evening is to make a recommendation to city council on this item. Does anyone have any further discussion? We do have four standards that we're voting on. Jeff Broschu, I think you have your hand up.
Yeah, I'm kind of going back and forth because, you know, it's, it's very clear that our role is to, to basically go through, make findings on these four standards. It's, it's just a little particularly challenging for me, like Mr. Prevenco brought up, you know, what makes this lot unique? And then, you know, what makes this plan consistent with the comprehensive plan? So much of the comprehensive plan has very clear direction on, you know, the rear access, the connectivity. And, you know, what the city feels like are, are views for improving the curb appeal of, of new buildings and particularly where it'll be tearing down and making a new structure. Obviously, I understand the financial concept of trying to keep it the same footprint. I guess, you know, but two of them are, are kind of, you know, really referencing the comprehensive plan and and the, you know, the, the use of the zoning. So I'm having a, you know, just a little hard time getting the cell, you know, the hook on this. I don't know if the applicant wanted to add anything that might, you know, clarify their intent with the rear, the rear access. You know, I really feel like that's a, a strong point, part of the comprehensive plan and, and the city. And I think it's, it's part of the foundation of, of the decision. And I apologize deeply that, that they weren't informed of, of the desire of this at multiple levels throughout the city. It should have been. But I, I think that's part of, you know, the criteria that we're looking to evaluate i- is included in that is the avail- availability of that rear access.
Thank you, Jeff. Jason, did you want to add something? Yes, go ahead.
Sure, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if I follow the question. I'm sorry, Jeff. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to try and respond to what I think the question is. The, just to, just to be clear, it seems as though the perception is that Alrig is saying no. Alrig's not saying no. Alrig is saying that at this point in the process, to find out that there would be a public easement that would need to connect through a few other properties that impact site plans, slow to storm water, impermeable surfaces, traffic considerations. All stuff that completely rewrites the way that the application is prepped. You know, a, a week or so before submission for the contract zone. It, it's just, it's a lot to ask us to suddenly pivot and say, yes. I, I don't think that anyone says that they don't want to do it. I haven't heard any of that from any of the team, from the engineers or from, from the company. But it's, it's a big ask right now. And it's, it's just, it's a lot to ask for, for, for a pivot this late in the game. Now, obviously, everyone is thinking about this behind the scenes, that the engineers are thinking about this, the consultants are thinking about this, the company's thinking about this. The, the ultimate client's going to have to think about this too. So that's kind of a, a broader response, specifically as to, to getting our arms around this particular use. The idea was that we were trying to minimize the impact to the area. It's in keeping with the existing uses that are adjacent to it. There is, I think if you look at the, the, the properties out front, there's front parking or at least a turn lane in front of the KFC area. There's front parking in front of Dunkin' Donuts. There, you know. The, the access and, and structure that we talked about by have it by moving the, the, the access point further down Smith Lane. Actually takes more cars away from, from what was, or what is the KFC and the, the Smith Lane traffic lights. You know, I think all of this has been done to try to minimize any change in impact to the area. And again, I would stress that it's all, these are all uses, these are all things that prior to April fifteenth would have been permitted. This would have, this would have been allowed under the, under the, the prior ordinance. So we're trying to find a way to thread the needle to make this work with the contract zone for those limited three items. Again, we're talking about an encroachment of like two feet into the, into the, the drive lane setback on the, on the one side. We're talking about the parking in the front and then we're talking about arguably a change in, in use, mostly just for clarity, as I think Bob confirmed. In hopes that that allows, you know, this, this project to move forward. So, Jeff, I'm, if I butchered that, I'm sorry if I didn't get to your, to your question.
No, I, I apologize. I mean, it wasn't really, my initial thing wasn't a direct question to begin with, it was just kind of to the other board members of where I'm kind of struggling in my thought process. But, you know, Mr. Howe, I heard you a couple of times refer to, you know, trying to coordinate this easement across multiple budding properties. And i- in my mind, I'm pretty clear that the board i- is asking that it would be a viable option on the one parcel that you have, you know, purchase and sale agreement on, that your first brick would be in the cards, you know, that you as the purchasing entity would say, yes, we are going to do what it takes to give our access to this rear connectivity. Not saying that it's going to be built this year, next year or in five years. But we've secured the rights or the access across your land to fulfill this vision of rear connectivity. And I'm kind of hearing that you, nobody's in the position to say that we'll do what we can across our parcel, we'll, we'll guarantee it. And, and the reason being is, as you've heard, there was a previous applicant that said, yeah, we're going to work really hard, we think we've got it all done. They got approval and it never materialized.
Right.
And that's a strong position, you know, at least for me, that it's important that we follow the layout, something that's been in the works for fifteen years in our community. And, and we're only asking for securing the rights or the access across your parcel, not for you to coordinate all the other neighboring parcels.
Right. And I don't, just to be clear, no one's saying no. It, it's just to, to, to make the kind of commitment that you're asking for tonight, it would require going back and completely redoing the engineering for the entire site. Because the access comes in over that area right now. It would mean redoing potentially stormwater. It would mean redoing a look at traffic. It would mean redoing a look at the layout. It's going to mean redoing a look at the parking. It's going to impact net developable area to the extent that that area becomes subject to easement. It is no longer allowable towards our calculation of square footage. It, it's not a no, it's just there's, the board is asking for something that's concrete. And it's way premature to, to get something concrete. The unfortunate reality for Alrig is that we have a limited period of time within which to get a permits and approvals to buy the property and do the project. And because of the way this played out. We kind of need to get this, we need to get this process going for the contract zone to know if it's going to move forward. It's not, again, it's not a no from Alrig. It's just understand that there, there, I mean, you know, there are so many pieces that go into getting the site planned to where it is right now, as part of the presentation that's going to be before you formally on the eighteenth. That have to be completely shifted to, to consider that. I think that Alrig has said to me at least that they're, they're willing to entertain anything that's reasonable in that back area, especially if the city, as it has said, is going to bear like the heavy lifting, you know, negotiating with the neighbors. We understand that. You know, that's all positive, but to ask for something concrete when it is going to mean a material change in the application that's set to be before you in two weeks is, that's a lot. And you're talking about thousands of dollars that have gone into engineering already to get this thing to where it is, to be ready to present. And time and energy and, and whatnot. So I hope the board's understanding that that's, you know, no one's saying no to that. It's just, it's a lot to ask for something concrete, you know, right now in the process.
Thank you, Jason. I understand that. And Jeff, to your point, I agree with where you're headed with it, but I'm just, I keep thinking that our role tonight really is to make a recommendation. And we can still wrap in that recommendation to what we do tonight. And then again, turn it over to council, turn it over to the applicant. But I, I do feel it's such a big component in the comprehensive plan that it, it needs to become part of our language this evening. Okay, so other board members? Jeff Grossman, Joyce, please, please, your hand up.
Yes, Madam Chair, I, just speaking personally, in terms of the elements of the contract zone that the applicant is, is requesting. You know, allowance for a fast food restaurant with drive-through window service, whether or not that's already allowed. I, I, I don't have a problem with that. I, I do agree with Matt in terms of the, the two rows of parking spaces out front. If, if, if the building's being torn down. There's no reason why the new building can't be moved forward such that there aren't two rows of parking spaces out front, put the parking out back. I, I realize that's not the same as KFC, but there's not front parking at, at Bitterford Saco Dental or KFC or Starbucks or IHOP. And that's certainly the, the, the wave of the future for us for Route One. And that's what we're trying to accomplish as far as Route One parking going forward. And that being said, you know, element number three on page thirty, you know. An access drive through window less than five feet from the property line. Again, if the building's being torn down and rebuilt, I don't see why there has to be that encroachment.
Thank you, Joyce. Other board members? Jennifer, yes.
I have a, a question more than a comment. Mr. Howe has referenced a couple of times the, the zoning change that just went into effect in April. Can, I get a timeline for when the application was made, when the process began conversation? And how that may or may not be a surprise that the change was forthcoming?
Jennifer, I will, this is Bob Hamblin. I'll take a shot at that. Looking at a plan set and I don't see a timestamp on this. The date, however, on the, on the plan set that I'm looking at is February seventeenth of this year. The applicants are, are well aware and were well aware of the upcoming zone change. In fact, this, this plan set is based on former zoning designations, the, the old zoning ordinance, if you will. And that was an immediate concern of mine when I first picked this up. And my gosh, you know, is, is Alrig or Stonefield not aware of the upcoming changes? So there was pretty quick communication and I, I think in particular that Mr. Klein from Stonefield was quick to get back and say, yes, we know. We understand that what we've submitted is under the old zoning ordinance. So we're talking about the B two D zone, for instance, but we're also aware that the zoning is about to change. So don't be overly concerned about that. And, and the fact is, we have, staff is witnessing the applicant's switching gear. So I, I think that is clear. I think in particular, what's being cited here is the notion that under the old zoning ordinance. There was an effort made several years ago, I'm going to say perhaps ten, to lessen the amount of parking allowed between Main Street and the building. It was, and I think that was referenced earlier, that, that no more than twenty-five percent of overall parking required parking spaces would be allowed between Main Street and the building. In fact, the new zoning ordinance is saying, that's it, all zoning is going to be either to the side or to the rear of the building. In fact, the new zoning ordinance is saying, uh, that's it. All zoning is going to be either to the side or to the rear of the building. So it has been a years-long effort on the part of the city to recognize that. Push that parking, uh, to the side and rear of the buildings, bring the building up toward Main Street and, uh, at least some would agree that, uh, that will result in an, an overall more pleasing streetscape, if you will. Uh, with perhaps a little bit more of a, a human scale dimension, um, that people walking along, along the sidewalk would be actually within oh, say 20, 30 feet of the front door of any one of these establishments as opposed to, uh, having to navigate their way through a couple of rows of parking spaces.
Thank you, Bob. Jason, I see you have your hand up.
I'm, I'm always dubious about being the one to talk a lot. So I'm, I'm sorry you have to listen to the attorney talk here. But I took Jennifer's question as, you know, asking about the timeline. Understand that for this applicant, the negotiation of the purchase and sale agreement started before the rezone happened. And we became aware of it, uh, as we got into the formal process, once the, the party was under contract. And we began the process of prepping for submissions. We became aware in, I think, January, um, that, that that had changed. So all of the prior mechanizations and work on behalf of the, the, the client and the developer was under the old ordinance. And, you know, cold water on the face in January, we need to shift gears to new ordinance. And, and looking at trying to keep, you know, what was a, a long fought deal together to sort of move it forward into development for, for this particular space and for the particular tenant that would go in. So for a timeline, the reason you're seeing those, those plans, the way they were, is that the workup had been under the old scheme. And then in January or, or late January, I think early February, it became clear that we weren't going to get in, in time to be under the old scheme. And to the extent that we weren't going to get in time under the old scheme, we'd have to deal with the new scheme. Um, and, you know, in talking with staff, um, this, this seemed like the most reasonable way to get through with asking for the fewest things, um, you know, parking staying basically as it is. The side setback being an, an encroachment within that five foot buffer of like a foot and a half, um, to Joyce's point earlier. And then the, the use as just a precaution.
Thank you, Jason. Board members, yes, Jeff, brochure.
Madam Chair. I'm going to make a motion in, in the effort of our recommendation to keep it on the positive. I move the board find that the contract zone is for, uh, I'm sorry. I move that the board find that the contract zone as proposed is for land with an unusual nature or location based on responses provided by the applicant.
Thank you, Jeff.
This is Joyce. I'll second.
Thank you, Joyce. Discussion of the motion. So right now, Jeff, you've read our first standard as written. We've heard from the applicant a little bit on this this evening. Matt, I believe you were the first one tonight to bring this topic up to the applicant. Board members, do you have thoughts on it based on what we've heard tonight?
Well, this is Joyce. Like I said, I don't, I don't have an issue with, with this one in terms of the, the fact of where this, where this lot is located and what it's surrounding it.
Personally, um, I'd be more compelled, you know, had the application before us included language surrounding this access through the rear of the parcel, just because it is unusual in the sense that it's a parcel that we're trying to gain, you know, a right of way through. Bob, I guess while we're discussing this standard, but also I had a question just in general for this evening. If we were to add language one way or another to the recommendation going up to council, would it be wrapped into our final motion? Or would we ever modify any of the language within these four standards?
I, I would say any of those are possible, but perhaps the, uh, no, based on the, the line of reasoning you voiced before you posed that question, it would be appropriate to wrap that into, um, into this motion if, uh, the motion maker and the, uh, person who made the second or might be agreeable to an amendment. If not, um, certainly appropriate to, uh, set forth a, a, say a second, um, or accessory recommendation, if you will, to whatever the board arrives at as you're closing in on acting on this application.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Alyssa, I, I guess I was thinking that under either the proposed B or D on page 24, to modify slightly the, the contract zone as proposed or the conditions proposed, um, that perhaps we propose modifications to those conditions that were set out in the draft contract zone agreement.
Okay. So include it somewhere else besides A.
Yeah, I, I, my guess would be D, just because right now D is talking about the, the conditions proposed are sufficient to meet the intent of this section. But, you know, oh, if somebody else wants to start redrafting.
No, I, I agree. It just needs, in my mind, it needs to be somewhere because I think that's a big component of what does make this parcel unique. Jeff, brochure.
Yes, Madam Chair. I guess my, my question is, you know, I want to be careful that we're not, we're not trying to draft conditions of approval. We are basically find, making our findings of, of the criteria that is held forth in our ordinance. And those are the four conditions basically that we're reviewing right now. And I think I would, I, I think I'm following Ms. Clark and Madam Chair's position in the sense that if it were to be presented that this lot becomes unique or unusual because the city's desire and the comprehensive plan asking for back access. And they're willing to grant that. And that is why they're asking to remain the parking in the front so that the drive-through can kind of circle around. Um, and that is why they're, they're, you know, moving it up. I would think that'd be a much easier pitch for me to jump on board with. But basically we're trying to say it's unusual nature because we're just going to rebuild it and not bring up the topic. And, and I agree that it's an important topic, but that's not the criteria that we're supposed, we're not reviewing tonight. We know that the criteria is in the comprehensive plan. And for us to do anything affirmative when the applicant's not saying that, yeah, we, we understand and we're going to do everything to make that happen. We'll make it happen, but we need these other changes in a contract zone to make it happen. To me, that paints a totally different picture. We just kind of have, you know, the, the caveat, it may happen. We're not close to it, but so what makes that unusual in, in my mind? And I'm just having a hard time wrapping around that. So I, I would just have to say there's nothing that makes this lot unusual. Once you take the rear access off the table because it's part of the comprehensive plan and it's not being included. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll, uh, call for a vote on the motion as Jeff presented regarding standard A. Matt?
No.
Jeff?
Which one?
brochure, sorry, Jeff brochure.
No.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Jennifer? No. I will vote yes. So I believe to count that again, Bob.
I got three, three.
Okay. Okay. So moving on.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Yes, Jeff.
I move that the board find that the contract zone as proposed is consistent with the comprehensive plan based on responses provided by the applicant.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Discussion of the motion.
So we're saying as proposed, as set out in our materials, because there haven't been any amendments that I've heard. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, Joyce. Yes.
My understanding as well.
And again, Bob, I guess I, we keep circling this conversation, but we're not, and Jeff, to your point a minute ago, I'm certainly not hearing a no from the applicant on this rear access. Um, and I understand it was a late topic and perhaps that's why we don't have more to that point in our packet. So again, Bob, I guess I just keep going back to how we can wrap this into a recommendation for council so that they understand it's a big component for us.
Madam Chair, um, I think the, uh, the most effective approach to this is that, uh, one of our, uh, several talented motion makers, JLC, uh, maybe, uh, scraw, scrawling down some thoughts, uh, as this discussion moves forward with an eye to, um, pulling this all together, once the four standards have been acted on. And as the board is aware, there is a, a draft motion to pull this together and, and forward a recommendation to the council. I think it would be appropriate to, uh, consider, uh, an amendment or amendments, uh, as, as the board determines, um, again, as appropriate, um, and wrap that into the, uh, final forwarding of a recommendation, um, to the council. I hope, hopefully that came through as simply as I intended it, but I, I don't think it's critical that, uh, you act on any one of these, uh, motions, uh, on the four standards you're going through. But I would say at the, the final motion that actually forwards this all to the city council. Personally, that's where I could see, uh, something being said about, uh, this access issue if the board is so inclined.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion relating to the motion that Jeff proposed for this standard B? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff brochure?
No.
Joyce?
No.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Jennifer? Oh, Jennifer? Sorry, I didn't hear you. No, is that a no?
It's a no.
Correct, it's a no. Okay.
No.
And I will vote no as well. Bob, I'm assuming you have the final count on that again.
Yes, uh, that was, uh, one, five. I've got it.
Great. Jeff, brochure?
Chair, I move that the board find that the contract zone as proposed is consistent with, but not limited to the existing uses and permitted uses within the original zone based on responses provided by the applicant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Joyce. I second.
Thank you, Joyce. Discussion of the motion. Hearing none. I'll call for a vote. Matt? Matt, sorry, I didn't catch up.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Jeff brochure?
Yes.
Thank you, Joyce.
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'll vote yes as well. So I believe we're all in the affirmative there.
Yes.
Moving on.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Yes.
I move that the board find that the conditions proposed are sufficient to meet the intent of this section.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Joyce. I second.
Thank you, Joyce. Discussion of the motion. Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Jennifer? Sorry, Jennifer, I didn't catch your audio.
I, I'm, I'm struggling. Um, yes, I, I trust that the council will, yes.
Yes, okay. So Jeff's motion for D. Matt?
No.
No. Uh, Jeff brochure, I don't believe I caught you yet.
No.
No. And I will vote no on this as well.
That was three, three.
Thank you, Bob.
Madam Chair, this is Joyce.
Yes, Joyce.
I, I'd like to make the final motion.
Thank you.
I, I move that the board forward a negative recommendation to the city council for the proposed contract zone at 507 Main Street. But with a recommendation that the council explore with the applicant issues regarding rear access and parking in front of the building.
Thank you, Joyce. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff. I would second.
Thank you, Jeff. Discussion of the motion. Jennifer?
Um, could I just ask for clarification?
Yeah, certainly. For clarification of the motion itself?
Of the motion, please. Yeah.
And are you looking for that, Joyce?
Please, or whomever, I would assume so, yeah. Sure. Yeah. I mean, my understanding is the issue of whether or not there's a contract zone approval is, is going in front of the council. With either a positive or negative recommendation for, from us. So we wouldn't be stopping this from going to the council anyway. I just formulated it this way to make it clear that, um, we, we want the council to continue discussing these issues with the applicant and hopefully formulate a revised contract zone agreement, um, to what we see on page 28 of our materials. To better incorporate, uh, the issues that were raised this evening.
Madam Chair, could I make a point of order?
Yes, sorry. Was that you, Jason?
Yeah, alright. So as, as you've been going through the discussion and the voting process, we've been trying to get the powers that be behind the scenes to really accelerate, weighing in on, on this road. Could I ask whether, um, if, if Joyce, if, if we were to say that we are, uh, 100% in favor of working with the city to make access happen in the back, as long as we're still able to do this development. Is, would, as a point of order, would that be sufficient for you to say that your motion suggests that if that were in place, when the council approves it, that the board would be in favor of it and that the no is because we haven't unequivocally said we're, we're on, on board? Tortured point of order.
I'm thinking it, it doesn't matter because get to the council, present, present the proposal to the council. Then the council will, will, you know, work on, on the contract zone agreement. I mean, this is not, uh, I don't, I don't feel like this contract zone agreement as proposed is, is going to be set in stone. I, I'm sure the council. I, I'm sure the council may have some modifications to it.
Maybe, maybe the better point of order is, if hypothetically we were to have said those things, would your motion sound something like, but if the applicant were to meaningfully engage in that conversation, then the planning board might be in favor?
And Jason, I just want to be careful here and turn to Bob, because having the applicant join in and discussion of a motion, I'm not quite sure. I just, I'm not clear if that's okay, and I want to make sure that Bob gives us the blessing to continue this small discussion.
I'm being accused by calling it a point of order.
And, and I would observe the public hearing has been closed, and I'm, I'm not trying to be unduly harsh with, at all toward the applicant, but the public hearing has been closed. I believe that discussion is limited to the board at this point.
So, so noted, and I think you, you heard what we're saying.
Okay, so Jeff Broschu, I see your hand up, and then I just also want to turn back to Joyce after with the motion. Yep.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I, I just wanted to point out, I mean, that would be a total different, what we heard would be a total different take on all the four standards that we evaluated. And we have to be very careful that our recommendation, from my understanding of MMA policy, is that we have to, has to be inconsistent with our findings. And I think the way that Ms. Clark did that is very accurately stated on behalf of the board. We're still sending up a negative recommendation because we did not meet all four standards. But we're saying that basically the reason that was underlying for a lot of us to have votes in the negative was, was because of this back access issue. And sure, her motion, the way I interpret it, is very clear, encouraging the council to engage in conversation, and that gives the applicant a little bit of time to get some really concrete information to the council. So we're not delaying them, we're sending up a recommendation. Unfortunately, it's negative, but we're sending up the reason why, and the two of them can try to iron it out at that point.
Thank you, Jeff. Joyce, anything to add to that?
No, not at all. And I mean, that's exactly my point, is we have, we have our proposal here. The council's going to be seeing this proposal, they'll be hearing our, our feedback, our recommendations, and, and move forward from there, and then it'll be back to us for site plan review if it's approved by the council.
Thank you, Joyce. Board members, any other discussion on this? Joyce, I hate to put you on the spot right now, but would you be able to reread your motion?
Oh, sure. Uh, I move that the board forward a negative recommendation to the city council for the proposed contract zone at 507 Main Street, but with a recommendation that the council explore, continue to explore issues regarding rear access and parking in front of the building with the applicant.
Thank you. Okay, so board members, that is, the motion is presented by Joyce. Not hearing any other discussion, I'll call for a vote. Matt?
Yes.
Jeff Broschu?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
No.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. So I believe that's five, yay is one, yay.
Can I just, sorry, Alyssa?
Yep.
Uh, this is Isabel. I was just hoping for clarification about who seconded the last motion, for the record.
That Joyce made, I believe it was Jeff Broschu, and he's saying, yes, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Bob, is this the conclusion of this item as you see it right now?
Uh, it is.
Well, thank you to the applicant, thank you to everyone who was with us so far tonight. Um, at this point, I, knowing that we as a board have been sitting here since a little after five, I'd like to take probably five to eight minutes max, and then we'll regroup, and we'll have our final item on our agenda tonight, which is a site plan amendment for 132 Seaside Avenue. So we'll be back with you in just a few minutes. Thank you. Members, it looks like we're all back here now. Um, so the last item on our agenda tonight is a site plan amendment for a proposed fourteen by seventy concrete pad and roof system at 132 Seaside Ave, which is map five, lot six. Um, the applicant Campbell's Rod and Gun Club, it's zoned LDR. And tonight we'll be taking a look at the request for waivers, the application completeness. We do have a public hearing advertised, and then we'll see where we go from there. So Bob, I believe we had some subsequent amendments and documents that were forwarded today. Did you want to speak to anything new that wasn't in the, the packet that we're working with, which, members of the public, just so that you're following along, we are starting on page thirty-three of our digital packet.
Uh, I, I will briefly, and I may ask Isabel to correct my vocabulary, but um, Isabel has done her usual nice job of pulling together all the communications that have been directed toward the planning office, um, mostly in the form of emails from interested parties and a butters, et cetera, to this particular project. Those, I think by and large, have all been forwarded to the planning board and have been assembled in a, how would you say, a, a separate place from the, on the website, separate from the packet, but they are publicly available. Um, and then secondly, I posed some late-breaking questions to the applicants, I believe yesterday. And they responded toward the end of the day today, provided the little sketch that shows, and this is already in your packet, showing the layout of the existing developed area on the property, and where the, the proposed concrete floor and, and roof structure would be installed. And they added an arrow to that, a north arrow, so, so that we can understand exactly how this would be aligned on the property. It also included five or six photographs, which I personally found extremely helpful. Uh, hopefully, we can put those up on the screen for folks who are viewing this evening, including the board, so you can have a, and a, a visual take on on what is out there on site today. So there's the west arrow, and yep, some photos of the existing site out there. And perhaps either now or later, one of the applicants could provide some narrative there, and perhaps point out where shooters may be standing, for instance, where the targets are, et cetera.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Um, board members, while we work on possibly, Isabel, maybe we can start promoting anyone here from the applicant. Um, any questions for Bob on the information in our packets and the additional information he just discussed? Okay, I don't hear any discussion from board members. So Isabel, I see you've promoted Brian Dunphy so far.
Can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Brian.
Hi, how you doing? Uh, so this is, uh, Brian Dunphy, I'm the club president, gonna be kind of doing the presentation behalf of the club tonight. I'm actually here with Paul Brady, who's on our building committee. And while I refer to him for kind of more of the technical questions, if there are some things that come up tonight. Uh, but just to kind of go over what's already been presented, and thank you all for being here tonight, and I understand that we've already been here for a couple of hours. The club, basically to give some background, and I don't know if we can put up the picture that was already shown, we had submitted some pictures earlier, Isabel, if you could do that for us, I think that'd be helpful to the board. Uh, we've been in continuous use for, since the nineteen fifties, and we're looking to build a, a structure on the existing area that we're using, uh, which is defined by the yellow chain, and you can see the picnic tables and the shooting benches that are there, that are, that are already on site. So we're basically looking to take that same area that's already in use, and just put a structure over that, and then actually add some concrete underneath. Uh, so it's a fourteen by seventy feet, and it's basically that exact area that you see where the, the yellow chain is. And we're hoping that this project is going to do a couple of things for the community. We were looking to be, continue to offer a good stewardship to the neighbors and the environment. We're hoping that we are going to see a reduction in noise from the structure being covered. This, if you could see in the plans, there's, there's walls on it too. So we're looking forward to that, hoping that'll reduce our impact. Um, and then we're also looking to increase the safety of our firing line by having that really defined on the front edge of that, so that we're doing something a little bit more advanced, more in conformance with like the other clubs in the area than just having a yellow chain up right now, it serves a purpose. So we're looking to make those improvements on the area. Um, as far as the property itself goes, we have about forty acres of property there, just shy of that. The actual shooting range structure is on just a small portion of that, and we have a clubhouse building, we hold monthly meetings, and other activities for education, and social events. And hopefully that's the kind of brief overview of what you need, and love, love to answer any other questions we have that, that come up with the board. Thanks for hearing us.
Thank you, Brian. So, um, board members, any questions for the applicant right now, based on that information? Jeff Broschu?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions, Mr. Dunphy. Do you have like a, a current set of, like a club charter or bylaws that currently limits the number of members that you have, like number of dues-paying members to a certain number? And then, if so, can you tell us what your current enrollment of active club members are?
Yeah, so we're regulated by our insurance policy at this point. Right now, we've currently got about two hundred and fifty or so members that are, that are, I'm not sure of the exact number, but it's just over two hundred and fifty that are currently on, on the rolls right now.
So does that mean that your insurance policy regulates that you cannot have more than two hundred and fifty members? Or is that just the number that you happen to have insured?
That's the number we have in, that are on, current on the rolls right now, we're up to three hundred is what we're, I think, is our current cap, is what we're listed to.
Okay, I guess part of my question leading into that is, you know, where it's a, an existing non-conforming use, and one of the big questions is going to be, are you expanding your non-conforming use? Is there some sort of a benchmark that tells the city where you're at as far as members and where you're capped? You know, that, so that we can have a measure of the, the uses and expanding, you're just enhancing the, the quality of use. And then my, my second question was, I know it's the design that you had, and, you know, obviously I read the packet, and there was a lot of concern about, obviously, noise from butters. Now, is this like the first step? Are you using this particular design with the, the angle of a longer sloped roof on the back, and a shorter one on the front, with the knee wall? Based off of, and like an industry or a pre-designed standard that would allow you to continue to add enhancements if noise were to be an issue? There are, you know, blue sky baffles they'll put in to possibly stop air and upward bullets. There are different, you know, acoustical features that apparently gun clubs have designed. Is this kind of like the first step of moving in? Is this like Plan A for B, C, and D in, in the future, if noise were to continue to be a problem?
And Jeff, Brian, before you answer, sorry, board members, I just want to remind us that we have waivers and application completeness still before us right now. So I don't want to go too far down that path, Jeff.
Okay, I'll retract my questions, and we can.
It's a great question, I save it, hold it. But right now, our first two steps are these waivers and the completeness of the application. So, any specific questions about what's been submitted in the materials? Again, with a focus on waivers and application completeness. And Bob, I don't know if you're, I believe you're still with us, but if you want to kick off a conversation on waivers at all, maybe?
Uh, I, I would be glad, I would be glad to put my spoon down and reappear.
Oh, the ice cream, yes.
Yeah, so, um, board members, um, particularly you longer-serving ones, have seen over a period of time, oh, whether it's a conditional use permit or, or a subdivision application, or a, or a site plan application. I would say varying levels of, of applications that are submitted. Uh, and, and it's current, it's a, a constant issue with staff to ensure that uh, applications that are coming forward to the board and appearing on planning board agendas are, are up to snuff, you know, essentially that uh, in the case of a site plan, that there is a site plan, and that it, it is as complete and accurately done, and generally professionally done, et cetera, as the board is accustomed to seeing. On occasion, we run into applicants who, who are able to put forth a reasonable and compelling case in supporting their application. But perhaps the materials that are submitted are, are not something that's been pulled together, say, by a professional engineering firm. That, that's generally the case with the Rod and Gun Club. Uh, you've seen, board members have seen the materials that have been submitted. There is a survey of the property, which I found very helpful. There is a, a smaller, really, it's an excerpt of that survey showing the developed area where members of the gun club congregate, and where the structure that's proposed would be located. So with that, with that said, Isabel and I routinely utilize a, a checklist that's based directly on the required submission section from the site plan ordinance. Based on the checklist, uh, we, we have to report to you that while we think that this is an application that tells its own story and provides adequate information for, for the board to move forward with. At the same time, we, we can't say anything but, no, there, there is not a plan stamped by a professional engineer here. The name and address of the owner, et cetera, do not appear on the plan, et cetera. So the, the alternative for that is, well, we could have coached the applicants to, listen, you really better go down the street, knock on the door of a professional enge, engineering firm, and spend some few thousand dollars on pulling together a plan. Well, we didn't do that. Um, the alternative, of course, would be to request waivers of several, in this case, of these submission requirements. Uh, and, and I guess I would say as much for staff as for the applicant, this is kind of us going through the act of putting our finger in our mouth, wetting it, and holding it to the wind. We may find that the board believes that the materials that have been submitted are adequate, and with the waiver of these items, that the applicant, in fact, had submitted a complete plan with enough information that the board is able to move forward, or the board may find that, you know, we just feel compelled to say that there is an item or two or three here on that, without that information, we just are unable to move forward. So I guess you could call this, in a sense, a calculated risk in bringing this forward to the board. And admittedly, this list of requested waivers is more than the board is used to seeing. Uh, I think we're simply at that point in the meeting where the board has to go through each of these items, make a determine, termination for itself as a group as to whether, well, whether these waivers are merited, and/or whether any one of them should be pulled aside, and the applicant simply asked, please provide more information on this, and until we see that information, further review would be Please provide more information on this and until we see that information, further review would be tabled.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, board members, I'm interested to hear your thoughts on this. Regarding the waivers, Jennifer, yeah?
So I think this is a question maybe following volley, volleying back to Bob. In the existing conditions that haven't been met, some of them seem substantial to the sensitivity of that region. Issues around topography, stormwater, waste. If I'm, if I'm reading the packet correctly. Are there, i- if we move this forward, are those possible to come up after the, after the fact in a negative capacity? That the city would have some liability for or that the, the gun club would have liability for?
Yeah, that's a good question. It, it's really a, almost a flip of the coin on some of these. For instance, the, the third item, name and address of owner applicant consultants. I don't see that as being particularly critical to the board being able to move forward this evening. And certainly, there may be board members that disagree with that and would prefer to see that information. In terms of resource areas. For instance, that, that speaks about things like wetlands and what is the situation with wetlands? Is there any wetland permitting in place on the property currently? We simply don't have that information. And one caveat here, members. The, the drawn out nature of this application is highly unusual in my experience. Combination of factors. To the best of my knowledge, the initial application came in roughly about fourteen months ago. Ran right into the COVID nineteen pandemic. And further review was derailed at that time. There was a change of personnel in the planning office a few months later. And it, it may just be that, that the applicant hasn't been all that, oh, how would I say? Motivated to, to push this forward with the planning office. At, at any rate, I am drawing on materials in some cases that were submitted over a year ago. And then some much more recent materials. So I'm doing the best I can to respond based on what I've seen to date. I, I think the applicant's done a reasonable job of submitting an application. But again, as far as these waivers go, there's just no getting around that. For instance, they have requested a waiver of topography and have stated that it is a flat site. And anybody familiar with the lay of the land out there, just several hundred feet off the beach will recognize that this is a, a kind of a typical topography out there, pretty flat. In terms of utility plan, landscape plan, et cetera, you know, it, this may very well merit the board stepping right through each of these and perhaps asking for input from the applicant. In terms of landscaping, I believe that they're essentially leaving the treed nature of the, the forty plus acre parcel alone. And they're certainly proposing no tree removal as part of the, the structure that they would like to install. Stormwater, I would say, non-issue. Each of the usual city departments have weighed in on this. After looking at the application, police, fire, Parks and Right, Public Works, Joe Laverrier, the city engineer from Public Works, would be the first to call attention to any concerns about stormwater management. Each of those four departments had, had no comments. They, they were not concerned from their different perspectives with any aspects of this plan. So stormwater would not be an issue, given the, the small nature of the proposed structure. Hydrogeologic, I would think not. We have heard the concern with, with bullets being shot. Is there lead involved? To what extent is potentially groundwater being affected by, by, by this lead that is, you know, burying itself in the earth? A hydrogeologic assessment would seem to be an entirely different matter. I, I don't think you'd find a professional weighing in and saying because there are bullets being fired and, and, you know, making their way into the ground here, that that's a cause for concern with stormwater, stormwater. But that's me, a planner speaking. I'm not a hydro geologist. The board may want to seek further input on that issue. And so on and so forth. There's no further lighting that's proposed. Archaeological and historic. We're not aware of any concerns there. Certainly where the structure is proposed is an area that's already being, being utilized and has assumedly been, you know, at least minimally excavated in terms of grading the area, you know, suitable for use by members. Design analysis, non-issue. That, or in my opinion at least, the structure that's proposed cannot be viewed from the public way. I, I mean, literally can't be seen from the street. And that's typically a threshold issue for the design of buildings or structures. If you can't see it from the public way, it's not really a concern. So, so that's a long-winded response. The board may indeed find that there's an item or two here that they simply feel that additional information is necessary for. And, and I think that's going to be up to the board to discuss amongst itself.
Thank you, Bob. So Jennifer, I know that was a, a lot of information, but do you have any follow-up questions for Bob?
I, I don't, thank you for that answer. That was very thorough and helpful. I, I guess my my thought is without the, the concrete answer. There could be some liability or some issue that without written evidence or, or the material supporting to, to either eliminate the concern or to raise the concern. It, it's a little, it puts a lot of burden of onus on the planning board office. And I just, you know, so it's perhaps up to the planning board to decide if they're comfortable with that level of, of of accepting the risk or the, the unknown.
Right. And Jennifer, I think Bob mentioned this, but this is unique in the sense that this is a longer list of waiver requests than what we normally see. However, this proposal is also arguably more simple than a complete site plan before us. So I think it is based on the nature of what they're proposing that we're seeing this long list, but it also doesn't prevent us from having discussions about these topics with them. Just because we don't have, you know, the, some of these items in the application materials. Jeff? Or, oh, Bob, you want to go quickly? And then Jeff?
I would just observe quickly. Board members, you, meeting in and meeting out, you're, you're generally used to seeing plans or, or sets of plans that have clearly, you know, been produced by our professional office. This, tonight is not the case. And I, I, I think a lot of this boils down to do you believe based on the information that has been submitted, that you can reasonably arrive at a at taking action on this? Or is additional information that might possibly only be possible through, you know, engaging a professional engineering firm to pull together a plan that might only be possible for the board to act with that kind of information being available to you? And I, I, that's a tough call. And I can make a recommendation on that, but I'd prefer to hear what board members have to say too.
Thank you. Jennifer, did you want to respond to Bob and then I'll go to Jeff?
I did just real quickly, the, the lighting plan. And, and I know amongst the scheme of things, that's, that's pretty light. But it, it does impact potentially the surrounding properties and the neighbors. So I just wonder how that can be addressed.
We can definitely hold that question. I'm going to go to Jeff only because I feel like oftentimes he does talk about lighting as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, you know, I, I agree. Or I understand how some board members may be feeling like, oh, this is a pretty long list of, you know, waivers. But, you know, try to put it in perspective of what, you know, the applicant's asking for. You know, they have an existing use that's going to remain an existing use at the same capacity. And, you know, they want to put a, a structure over it to, you know, allow a little shelter from the, the sun and the wind and the rain. And they're, they're trying to follow the rules and they came to the city and asked. You know, so our criteria for site plan is obviously very geared to much larger projects. I would equate this to, you know, a homeowner who has gardened for the last, let's see, sixty-seven years. And now their knees are getting bad and they want to put a greenhouse in their backyard. The use isn't changing at all. They're just going to have a structure that has windows and they're still going to be growing vegetables, but now they don't need to bend over. And in that particular case, we could be checking off all of these boxes. Why should somebody have to go to a professional engineering firm to draw a sketch of a greenhouse in their backyard? And, you know, I read through the packet, there is no lighting proposed. They're not adding lighting at all. So why should they provide a photometric plan? No need required. You know, they're not changing utilities. They're not putting electricity to the structure. No utility need required. You know, as I check off all of these things. You know, I, I very much see why the waivers would be warranted. You know, they're trying to do a reasonable modification to their, their, their forty acre site that has one clubhouse and one shed on it. So, you know, and I understand that there's a much bigger concern here with, with noise mitigation and that would be addressed later, but to view the application complete in my eyes is, is pretty straightforward. Maybe the, the only one would be the topography, but it's flat. Everyone knows that it's flat there. It's shown in the pictures that were provided last minute. And I don't usually like last minute's middles, but you know, it gives a pretty accurate rendering of what the sketch was and what the existing site conditions are. So with that said, in the effort to try to, you know, hopefully you know, get into the, the more substantive parts of this, I would like to move to grant the waivers for submissions as.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jeff Grossman, for the second. Discussion of the motion.
This is Joyce. I, I just point out, one, I, the name and address of the owner and applicant is on page forty-two on the application itself. So I, I don't even, I mean, they can get a waiver for it if they want, but they shouldn't need one because it's already there. And I, I agree with Jeff's points too. I mean, this prop, this, this club limits its hours to nine AM to sunset. So there, there's no need for lighting. If there are, it's operating during daylight hours.
Thank you, Joyce. Jennifer, I did see your hand up.
Yeah, if you could just get confirmation from, from the applicant, there'll be no internal lighting in the building. So if it's overcast and dark. How does the building service?
Yeah, so, so per the plan, there's, there's no lighting or, or electrical that's being run. We're, we're not asking for any of that. There's, there's security lighting on the property already, but the structure itself wouldn't have any of that, internal lighting inside.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That's part of the reason that the waivers are there. Like Jeff had mentioned too, there's a lot of things that just don't apply because we're not doing a whole lot more than making improvement to the existing space that we're, that we're using. So I think that's probably part of the reason we have so many waivers. And it may not be a typical thing for the board to look at, but I think that's a really good analogy of putting a greenhouse on a garden spaces. We're essentially looking to put a roof over our heads. So we're not standing in the mud. For lack of a better way of saying that. Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. Further discussion of the motion is presented by Jeff. Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Matt?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman? I heard a yes, I believe.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, Jeff Broschu?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. So the motion for the waivers has passed six zero. Okay, we're moving on to finding the application complete.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff Broschu.
Yes, yep.
I move to find the application for an amendment to the site plan to be complete.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jeff Broschu?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Okay, so six zero, the application has been found complete. Okay, so board members, back to further discussion. Now that we've gotten through that housekeeping. Joyce, yeah?
I, I'd like a little more information from the applicant in terms of the use of this building. Is it? Is it just a structure and people are shooting out from it? Or is it a, is it an indoor shooting range?
So I guess I would have Isabel, if you would pull up the, the, the plan, so it was going to get it visible for the, for the board. But it's a structure that you would stand inside of, being that's three-sided and then you would have the firing line defined as a front where the current yellow chain is now. So there would be a defined line that way. So you would shoot from inside it and inside the structure. Is that help, helpful?
Yeah, it's very helpful. It, it was hard to tell from the drawings whether it was three-sided or four-sided.
Yeah, so the front, the front would be open if that going down range.
Thanks.
Yes.
Jennifer, yeah?
I'm just for the clarification and I get slow after nine o'clock. So to follow up with Joyce's question, is it almost like stalls? That individuals are in, so it's open to the front, but it's enclosed over them and around the back and sides?
So the, for the plan, there's a, there's like a knee wall in the front, so you can actually physically walk out the front side. Boards there and there's doors on the back. And as far as stalls, no, it'd just be delineated inside with paint. As far as lanes go.
Okay.
We, we would actually take the existing benches and move them inside. We would cover the benches that are already on site.
So as people have been talking about, a, a lot of the emails coming in, we're talking about sound and impact of sound. It's really not going to have a significant change on sound either way. Is that correct?
Well, it will have an impact on sound because we, there will be something interrupting the sound waves, which will be the back wall, the front wall, where we shoot the firing line. That won't be closed. But there is a burn twenty-five, fifty and a hundred feet down range from that. And the burn does mitigate some of the sound, but the sound can, will be reduced by putting a structure up. Will not be in, in any way. I mean, our intention as time and money allows would be to make it even more soundproof with use of Roxol and other sound deadening material.
So there's some echo, sorry. Brian, I guess my question I had earlier, Jennifer just almost touched on the same point. I was wondering, you currently have what appears to be picnic tables. to be picnic tables that are set up as stations, if you will, it seems like to me. But is there going to be a change in the number of active participants at the range from what you currently have to what would be allowed for, you know, capacity or occupancy inside this new structure? For how many people can be active at the same time?
Thank you for the question. So the design is for the same amount that we can have right now. It's just all going to be covered as, so there would be no increase in the number of shooters on the firing line at the same time. There would be the same number.
Jeff Broshu?
Madam Chair, thank you. Yeah, so I just have a couple of things to for for the applicant to maybe kind of ponder, or that I see as, you know, possible issues that we might want to try to iron out as a board. One is condition of approval number eight, talks about the hours of operation. And I know it was marked in your in your packet that it was from nine AM till sunset, if I recall. I'm just wondering if you guys would be good with us putting that documented into the condition of approval number eight, so that we we have your set hours of operation. One, so that we we have a basis of what you're currently using, and two, for for future movements, which I found kind of unique, because some of the the letters that I was hearing or reading in in the packet with claims of early discharge of firearms and stuff, really might not even be from your club, because hunting hours typically in the state of Maine are, you know, Monday through Saturday, you know, sun, half an hour before sunrise to half an hour after sunset. So there could be people hunting essentially that would be mistaken for members of your your group. But I think it would be real important if we could include your hours of operation in in this condition. And I just want you to kind of ponder that thought. I had the same question as Madam Chair, with the number of members that might be able to participate in the activity simultaneously. And as you've indicated, there would be no expansion of that use, because you have the same number of tables that will now be under this cover that are currently exposed. So that would not change. The the next portion of that was the number of active members of the club, which I guess kind of becomes a moot point if your if your number of lanes or stalls or whatever is used in your industry. I think of a bowling alley, I guess, but if you call it lanes, if that hasn't grown, so essentially, your your use cannot expand, because you're staying exactly the same number that you have now, except they're covered. My only thought is, and I think I viewed it as a sense of good gesture, was the invitation for local police departments to be able to qualify at your facility. Have they historically been able to do that and been active members? And would you be okay if that's not included? Because that could possibly be viewed as an expanse of your operations. Was kind of my third question. And then my fourth one was kind of getting back to some of the sound attenuation. I know I heard you speak a little bit about, you know, obviously, there's a back wall to this, there's a roof. And there was a particular design, I think, an eight-foot opening on on the the front profile, if you will. And then a little, you know, for a total like twelve-foot total vertical opening, because there's a four-foot knee wall in there, and then the backside's a little bit lower. And that seemed to be a similar design to what I, you know, so I I wanted to understand more about the dynamics of noise and the ranges. And there was a pretty interesting profile from Canada, British Columbia, that had their public, their inland fisheries department had had a pretty nice website that talked about organizations and kind of the steps that they would do. And I was wondering if you had modeled this after theirs with the anticipation of being able to add additional forward throw sound baffles, there are different design techniques. And it sounds like Mr. Brady touched on that, is that the goal is to, you know, let's get the the shelter up. And, you know, we can obviously continue to mitigate noise if, as funds become available, kind of as a good neighbor standard. And so if you could kind of touch on if that was your overall goal with this design criteria, or did you have another design standard that you referenced that has worked very well at other similar ranges? Thank you. So Madam Chair, if I may, I'll just kind of respond to some of that. As far as historical use of police departments that are using our range or current, we've had a orchard beach, which is a fairly small department of access to the range already in place. We did want to extend the invite in the future, and that was a conversation we've had internally of having maybe Saco and Bitterford have the options to be there as well, but they're not currently. Some of the officers have come down as members, guests, and incited in or use the range as a as a as a guest before, but there's no formal agreement with either of those communities at this time. So it was more of a thought process of how can we help the community with the resource we have and save everybody else, maybe a little bit of travel, a little bit of money, or whatever they're doing to make that more convenient, using the resource that we have. So that's kind of the thought process behind the membership of the club, is trying to be able to give back to the community and support the law enforcement agencies that help us in our neighborhood. As far as hours of operation go, it's it's stated right now, and Jeff, I think you hit the bullet kind of right on the head with that one. If, yes, in the state of Maine, we have laws that allow you to shoot from a half hour before sunrise in the morning till sunset, or a half hour after sunset, depending on what season it is and what animals you're hunting, if you're hunting ducks, or if you're hunting deer, or whatever it might be. So our hours are actually not regulated by the state of Maine as far as hunting hours or anything like that, as far as shooting range goes. So we've looked at other clubs and and set those hours. And we've also made modifications on Sundays based on the historical church group in the in the community. So we allow quiet hours actually all summer long as well for that, which we noted in our application, June, July, and August. We don't start our operations until noon time and just go to sunset, so we have quiet hours in the morning. And we also don't start till nine o'clock other days. So those things are already in existence. The other point of that was noise. And I think Paul kind of addressed it already, and I'll let him speak to that, the design piece, I think, is probably his forte.
The, thank you. The building really just replicates the all the buildings that I've seen in a variety of other clubs throughout the state and in other states, Buxton, Scarborough, York County, and Spurwick all have very similar buildings in in the shape. I've also been to a couple in other other states that very much the standard. It's conventional, it's easy. That's another reason why we've copied that. But I I looked extensively at the beginning of this, and we would eventually want to put soundboard up, not hard plasterboard, of course. But, you know, wood, a wood structure will upset the the the, thank you, the the wood structure will upset the sound waves. It's it's, nothing will amplify those sound waves. And as as I said, as time goes on, we'll use a sound deadening insulation, and also a, as time and money goes on, we'll also put sound deadening board. As of right now, we basically shoot in the wild, in the in the great wide open. In closing that, will the physics dictate that the more structure you put in front of sound waves, the more it deadens them? So I hope I've answered that question. Mostly, we've just copycated the building structure with other other places that we've all seen. Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? Hearing none, we have advertised a public hearing. And as anticipated, I know there's a lot of interest in this item, and I know we have a lot of members of the public with us tonight. Jeff Broshu?
Madam Chair, I move to open the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Joyce. I second.
Thank you, Joyce. Without discussion, I'll poll members of the board. Jeff Broshu?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
No vote yes as well. Okay, so we've opened a public hearing. Bob, I might just have you start us off just with a a note to both myself and the public on our, you know, focus tonight for the public hearing. I know we've heard a lot of interest in this so far, so I just want to remind board members what we're focusing on. And also, just to the public, we're really, you know, appreciative of all of your comments and looking forward to having this hearing tonight so we can hear more. So, Bob, maybe you can just remind me. So we're just, we're focusing on just this new amendment for this new structure.
That is correct. And the board would be within within its rights to ask that members of the public limit their comments to anticipated impacts of this proposed structure. The fact that the Rod and Gun Club is where it is and has been there going back to the nineteen-fifties is really not part of the discussion this evening. That that's part of the background facts. But, for instance, a comment that this is just in the wrong place at the wrong time is is really out of place. It has no place in the, hopefully, in the public comment this evening. So to the extent that members of the public are able to focus on the structure that is proposed, and potential impacts that it feels may result from this structure being installed on the property, that is most appropriately the topic that should be focused on this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. It's a good reminder for us as well as board members. Okay, so Isabel, turning to you for.
I already have a couple of people with their hands raised. Anyone else looking to speak, just use the Digitalize hand feature at the bottom of your screen. The first person whose hand I saw was Lynn Copeland. Lynn, you'll have to unmute yourself to speak. Thank you very much, Madam Chair and planning board members. My name's Lynn Copeland. I am the former Ward Four City Councilor. From my house to the gun club is just through the trees. It's I am directly there. They do shoot early in the morning and often. So I just wanted to clarify that one point. Now, the the planning board packet said that it was a pad and roof system, but it turns out their sketches are full buildings. And I can't imagine that we wouldn't have some kind of building codes that they need to adhere to. Certainly, their application was not quite full. And the the their number one complaint that I heard as a city councilor here was noise. I heard it myself. People would call me up at seven in the morning and say, do you hear this? You know, or try and explain to me. And I'm like, it's in my backyard. Of course, I hear it. So noise is the number one thing with the community. I'll just tell you that right out. And so having this roof structure over everything, I'm just wondering if that's not directing all the noise in one direction. And I sure as heck hope it's not in the direction of my house. Bob, can you tell me if it is? I'm at five-twenty-six Ferry Road. You can see that on your map. There's nothing between my house and the gun club but trees. To the point about the lighting, we can't see the lighting from here. So that's, I agree with you all, that that's a non-issue. So the increased use, that is an expansion and a change of use. So they're saying that three police departments are going to be able to come there and and shoot. And even if Old Orchard Beach is just doing it now, that's not what is allowed in the gun club. That's a commercial use. And they talked about a growing organization and 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 just the fact that it's a covered structure out of the wind and everything is going to bring more shooters more of the time. So that is an increase in use. Um, you know, I I would get as a city councilor, I would get calls that the children were frightened. And somebody brought up in the testimony that was submitted online that that people wouldn't know if there was an active shooter. And that's true, because there are many guns that go off back there that just go and go and go. And I'm not going to say I know guns, but I can tell that it's an automatic type gun, you know, whatever that means, military style. I can hear it. It hits me in the chest if I'm out in the backyard. So you can't say that that doesn't happen. It does, and there will be an increase. You know, I feel that this is going to detrimentally affect the value of my property, and I know that my neighbors are concerned about that. There's also the tourism. I know we just listened to Denise talk about all the economic development we're trying to do, but if people don't want to have, you know, an automatic machine gun going off nonstop in their yard, essentially, that brings our values down, and that's not fair. And then let's talk about the lead. I've heard that the lead, and this is total hearsay, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that it's never been cleaned up. So I know that you're in wetlands back there, because I know back behind my house, there's wetlands. And I look at the map and I see culverts, I see walking bridges, I see ditches, and there's a short pond is just right abutting your property. There's arrows that go into the water flow. It's real that the lead is an issue. I'm really disappointed that the planning board allowed all those waivers. I just can't even believe that that happened. So those are my big issues. And the other question I had was about where do you go to the bathroom? Is there a toilet system there? Or we're going to have more people, cops, people all day long are going to be shooting in my backyard? Where does everybody go to the bathroom? I think that's an important question for the environment. And, you know, if people are going outside, that's really horrifying, but I don't know. So I'll I'm asking that question. And a waste disposal plan, that's something that I think that that should have happened here. But I also want to, all right, so now I've got my grievances out of the way. I do want to tell you that I was married to a hunter for twenty-two years. My daughter is a hunter. My son shot up at Cumberland Rod and Gun Club. He was an NRA sharpshooter. And so I'm not against guns. I'm against polluting the water with the lead, and I'm against the noise. I, you know, I would say that the planning board would be remiss if they did not require now soundproofing of that building. And I suppose some of my three minutes are up, but I really would like an answer from the applicant on some of those questions, with the bathroom piece and the cleanup of the lead. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. And just so everyone's aware, we will handle tonight's public hearing like we normally do, where we'll let everyone who wishes to speak go through their questions, and then at the end, we'll turn back to you, Brian and Paul, for some responses.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, Isabel?
The next person on my list is Stephen Dupree. You'll just have to unmute yourself.
Hi, Stephen Dupree, Three Stacy Street, Saco, Maine. I'm a former member of the Saco Planning Board and a current member of the Economic Development Commission. And I would like to speak in favor of this project. If this structure is not built, all of the conditions that are there now will exist. The club will continue to shoot. They will continue to have police department come and shoot. And the structure is one step on a journey to mitigate this noise complaint that everyone seems to have. As far as the lead bullets, they're shot into a burn. they're shot into a berm that is above ground, that is above the water table. And that's all I want to say on the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
The next person on my list is Neil Schuster. Neil, you'll just have to unmute.
Hi, good evening. Neil Schuster, 433 Ferry Road. Former 20-year member of the Planning Board. And also, I am not a direct butter to this project. My wife and I have lived at 433 Ferry Road for 31 years and have been familiar with the existence and lived with the existence of the Rod and Gun Club for the entire, for that length of time. Our home is approximately one mile from their location as the sound of the bullets in the direct line of the sound of the bullets. I reviewed the site plan amendment and I provided some submissions back in March of 2020. And just happened to notice, look at the agenda this eve, on Sunday, so late submission that I was pleased to see that Isabel had added to the packet for this evening. Like everyone else, primary concern is sound. If, as the applicant states, that this new structure will decrease the sound, I'm in full support. However, what data do we have to prove, does the applicant have to prove that this is actually going to reduce the sound? I'm not a sound engineer, but I'm well aware that sound is magnified and amplified when bouncing off hard surfaces such as wooden cement. Being in closed environments, sound can bounce, so I'm concerned whether this will get magnified. We have no data as to what existing conditions are to be able to then compare what the conditions are with this new structure. And again, if this reduces the sound, I'm just speaking for myself, I would be all for it. My recommendation is that we get a peer-reviewed study, a sound study, of what effects the construction will have on sound magnification. It's the only way that this can be determined. I appreciate the applicant's commitment to reducing sound and appreciate that. But the only way that this can be resolved is through data. And the only way that can be done is getting a sound engineer to be able to determine those levels. If it's determined from that peer-reviewed study that noise will be increased, then at a minimum to build this, the gun club must be required to provide sound, sound deadening materials now. And I appreciate the future and cost and all of that. But if this is going to magnify the situation, then it needs to be resolved. One of the, one of your review criteria for this evening is the proposed development does not have a significant detrimental effect on the use and peaceful enjoyment of abutting property. And I realized from the state legislation that was submitted in the packet that shooting, sport shooting ranges are very well protected by the state. But it also talks about expansion of use and increasing noises. So how has the applicant, and as the planning board knows, the burden of proof is upon the applicant to demonstrate how these standards are being met for you to be able to make a positive finding. In my submission for this evening, you will find a link to a 15-second video that I recorded outside my property, one mile from this, from the Rod and Gun Club last April 15th, in preparation for public comment last year. But that 15-second video just gives you a brief display of what the sound is at my location, one mile from there. So I can only, I can't imagine what Lynn Copeland senses. In the past, the planning board, and I submitted this in the March 20th submission, the planning board has required sound studies at the border, the, the property border, looking at decibel levels. And some of the projects that were looked at for sound issues because of issues expressed by abutters was the snowmobile club that wanted to institute lawnmower racing in the summertime. When former councillor Tripp was building a sawmill on his property, the planning board required a sound study to make sure that sound ordinance was, were being met at the border, at the property line. Also, the auto repair business on Flag Pond Road that was installing some machine repair company. And also a reminder to the planning board that Plaine Ward denied a contract zone application for a farm-to-table business in C1 that the board gave a negative recommendation because of neighbors concerned about weddings and the noises from the bands. So the board has a history of doing sound assessments at the property line to determine compliance with Saco's zoning ordinances. But if you have a chance, click on that link, and that'll just give you a sense of what we listen to here, one mile away. It's only 15 seconds, but add that for a few hours. Also, your, your, one, another standard that you have to look at this evening is the, that, that how is the applicant complying with all the good neighborhood standards, performance standards, and the zoning ordinance? And how is the plant, how is the applicant demonstrating compliance with all of those standards? Hours of operation already have been discussed. Anecdotally, I think from anyone else who speaks, you'll hear about gunshots at all time. In my backyard, I live on the marsh on the Saco River. And Mr. Brocher talked about hunting. In the fall during duck hunting season, I'm awakened every morning at sunrise when the ducks get shot out in my backyard. But that is entirely different from the gunshots that come from the Rod and Gun Club, and I do know the difference, the noise. I am going to be, other things that really, I'm going to be communicating with the code enforcement office about some of the other, about expansion of non-conforming use, potential for that, and some of the baseline data about what do we have for baseline data for activity levels now? So if this doesn't get approved, if noise increases in the future, what do we have to measure that against? But that's outside of your discussion this evening. I'll be communicating that with code enforcement. So it really comes back to how the applicant, the burden of proof upon the applicant to demonstrate that all the ordinance has been met, that I, my right to peaceful enjoyment of my property is protected by this expansion. And also with a growing organization, one of my favorite movies, a quote from one of my favorite movies, "If you build it, they will come." So a comprehensive peer-reviewed study of the noise impacts for the proposed expansion must be completed to determine the noise levels and what the mediations need to be. Now, I realize the Rod and Gun Club is not going to go away, nor is that my intent. However, everything changes over time. Different people, different times. I'm sure that no one back in the 50s ever anticipated the surrounding growth and development that will occur in this area. An existing non-conforming use is looking to grow or, or expand, or at least change, just as the neighborhood around them has continued the same. The planning board has a different challenge. All these non-conforming uses always become challenging to the planning board. With this site plan amendment, the planning board has the opportunity to achieve a better balance between two very divergent uses within very close proximity. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
The next person on my list is Mike Roberts. Mikey, you will have to unmute yourself.
I am unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, can I just give us your address as well for the record?
Well, I'm going to give you the address I grew up on, which was 14 Marshwood Circle, about a quarter a mile from the gun club, right next to the old Nun convent. And I'll give you the address that I currently reside at, which is 438 Main Street in Town Saco.
Great, thank you, Mike.
Am I clear to, clear to speak?
Yes, definitely, yep.
Well, I just want to say with the improvements in the firing line safety that the Camp Ellis Rod and Gun Club is, is trying to do here, it seems to me, you know, first and foremost, I'm in full support of this project. And it, it, it seems to me that they're just trying to increase the safety of their firing line and help reduce noise and continue to be good neighbors. And it, just listening to some of the comments here tonight, I find it ironic that the people in opposition of what the Camp Ellis and Rod and Gun Club are trying to do, the concerns that they have would help, what, the shooting structure would help mitigate some of their concerns, but yet they're in opposition of it. So it's, I, I, I can't quite grasp why they wouldn't want something like that to happen if they really are concerned about noise? Or, or are they really concerned about their property value? Like, I think it was Karen, Karen Copeland may have stated. When I hear things like active shooter and military-style weapons and automatic weapons and not fair, that to me has nothing to do with what the Camp Ellis and Rod and Gun Club are trying to do here tonight. And, and looking at the packet that they submitted, I looked at the state statute 3011. And it, it seems to me that they are 100% protected by the state in what they're looking to do. And, and, and noise, the discussion of noise shouldn't even be happening tonight because they're protected by that state statute. They're grandfathered in. And, and, and whether or not the structure is going to amplify noise, reduce noise, to me, after reviewing that state statute is a moot point. And, and it seems to me if they wanted to go to court over this, and I'm no lawyer, just like Neil said, he's no sound engineer. I'm no lawyer, but looking at that state statute, I mean, it would be a waste of taxpayer dollars to, to have the Camp Ellis Rod and Gun Club go to court over this because they would win in a landslide. So I, I, I'm just concerned, and you know, Neil said, you know, he lives a, a mile away from the club. And, and, but yet people are duck hunting in his backyard, and Neil, I'm one of those duck hunters. I'm one of those guys who woke you up first thing in the morning. And if you're telling me that a 12-gauge shotgun in your backyard is somehow not as bad as the Camp Ellis Rod and Gun Club a mile away, I, I, I think that you're, it's not about sound to you. Because if it was about sound to you, you'd have an issue with the duck hunter in your backyard more than the Camp Ellis Rod and Gun Club a mile away. So I think the board needs to really take a look at some of these people who are in opposition and what they're really, what's their really, their true meaning for the opposition? Is it that their property value is decreasing or that they, unfortunately, their realtor did not divulge to them that there was a shooting range next door when they bought their house? And, and unfortunately, you know, the Camp Ellis Rod and Gun Club is not going to go away. And whether this shed gets built or this shed does not get built, or the improvements to the firing line happen or they don't happen, it's not going to change anything. And, and it seems to me it is, is though the, the real agenda to some of these people who are in opposition of this, of this project are that they want the Camp Ellis Rod and Gun Club gone. And that this to them is the first step in making that happen. So I fully support this. And, and I think we need to encourage more people to get outside and, and become comfortable with the shooting sports and hunting. And, and I'm in full support of this project, and I hope that the board looks at this project as, yes, would you make a resident of Saco jump through all of these hoops to put a shed in their backyard? And the answer to that question is no. The Camp Ellis Rod and Gun Club is essentially trying to put up a glorified shed. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you, Mike.
The next person on my list is John Brady. John, you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Hi, John. Thanks for joining us. If you just unmute yourself and also state your address for the record, that would be great.
How about now?
Yes, perfect.
Uh, my name's not John Brady. It's actually Walter Alexander. I was just on someone else's Zoom. Uh, I live in Lyman, Maine, and I'm an active member of the Camp Ellis Rod and Gun Club. As far as all this goes, I mean, more and more time again, it's, people hate weapons, and I understand that. And I understand that people want peace around their area. What we're doing right now, we're not actually improving anything other than our structure. And one of the things it's helping is, to my knowledge that I've been through with the gun club, we have a lot of our membership is the older membership. I know when I got involved 15 years ago, the average age of the gun club was probably 65, 70. Nowadays, you know, those people are in their 80s. To give them stable ground to shoot on is a major thing. As far as our meetings with the gun club, I remember turning around and actually having, I believe that we sent you guys some sound information, but it didn't seem that it was in the pamphlet, but it had to do with Spurwink Rod and Gun Club, which is one that we visited many a times, and this is kind of the model that we took after. The only thing we're trying to do is improve the vicinity, the area we use, and hopefully, you know, it's, it's a small step in the future. I understand people don't want us to be there, but as far as every law I've researched, we're allowed to be there. I mean, I understand we've been grandfathered. I understand people don't, don't appreciate us because there's people on both sides of every argument. But we're really just trying to be better neighbors, and I think that's the one thing that the board really has to understand, that this is just a structure to put us in the path of being that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
The next person on my list is just identified as Broker Step S Wire. You'll have to unmute yourself and then state your, your name and address for the record.
Christian Steppy, 25 Tall Pines Drive in Saco. You know, just to follow on the last couple of, you know, individuals, I'm 100% for this. You, you know, it's just trying to, you know, it's just a three-sided enclosure. It's not anything big. You know, if somebody was to say you were going to install a greenhouse there, that would actually be more than what this enclosure is. You know, it's the same space that is there. It's not increasing the number of individuals that would be firing at the same time. And I could tell you, it's, the range is not used as often as what's being portrayed right now. I go down with now my 10-year-old daughter on a regular basis, and she, you know, very rarely is, is, is somebody shooting. You, you know, it was brought up that it affects property values. I could give you, you know, a plethora of information about property values increasing in that corridor. You know, to the tune, we've got a multimillion-dollar project going on right on Ferry Road. Lots of other projects going on in the direct vicinity, so it, it has nothing to do with affecting value in a negative way. It's probably that individuals just don't want the gun club there, but to reinforce, it's not going anywhere. You, you know, trying to build this shelter, which I wouldn't even call it a shelter, let's just say a covered shooting bench or area, a covered area that the, the benches can go. Directing, you, you, you know, what's the first thing that somebody is going to do if they're going to hear a balloon pop or a loud noise? They're going to try to get out of sight, or do you roll your window up when the, the fire trucks are going by you because that window slides up and instantly your ears are okay? Well, that's what they're doing, you know, going to direct the sound to go one, one direction. And, you, you know, it will definitely reduce the sound coming from behind. So if, if we're going to try to use, well, we need sound studies done or whatever, come on now. You, you know, we were just in the, you know, two and a half hours ago, we were just possibly thinking about letting a bottle go without possibly doing the, the side road over to, to, you know, to the additional road. You, you know, let's, this is, I don't want to say making a mountain out of a molehill here, but, but, but it truly is. And really, this is trying to do, be a, a good neighbor by doing something that would, on a minimal scale, you know, just, just make something a little bit better at the, at the gun club. And, you know, in turn, try to reduce sound from coming behind. You, you know, and we talk about, it was referenced, you know, in aging members, there are a lot of aging members. And I'll tell you what, something that I'm not sure if it's on the plan, I don't even think I've mentioned it to anybody now there, but you know, could we put a temporary ramp into one of those? You know, so now we, we have, you know, access to somebody that might be disabled or possibly in a wheelchair or an elderly in a scooter that can now work their way up into one, one of these, you know, firing lines. I mean, that's a win right there, you know, and again, ultimately, I could probably talk forever, but I just want to stress, it's, it's a nice area. And, you know, I bring my daughter down there. I've been bringing her down there since she was probably five years old now, six years old. And it's, you know, I think it's, it's a win for the club and truly, it's probably an unseen win for, for the direct vicinity and the, and the abutters if we were able to get something. Something with a backstop there that would stop some sound. Anyway, that that's all I have, but I'm one hundred percent for it.
Great, thank you, Christian. Isabel, do we have more members of the public with their hands up?
Um, I do not have anyone else with their hands up right now. Yes, I do. The person with their hand raised is um Sue. Shower. Sue, I think you'll have to unmute yourself.
Hi Sue, it looks like you're unmuted if you just want to give us your address as well for the record.
Sue, we can't hear you. I do have one more person with their hands raised. If you want to try to figure out the microphone issue while we let them speak. Um, the next person on my list is just identified as Neil. I guess they're needing to rejoin the meeting, so. Let me take them one second.
Hello.
Hey there, if we could have your full name and address for the record, that would be great.
Sure, my name is Neil Frank and I live at five Sunrise Avenue in Saco. Uh, not very far uh from the beach and I just had a couple of things to say, um. Uh, I'm new to the area. Um, I feel very welcome in the area and I I really like it here. I have heard gunshots, but the the noises I hear are from the duck hunters in the morning. Um, and I happened to run into quite a few people in the area. Uh, everyone's really nice, but I'd like to say that. Um, I can tell the difference between uh gunshots that are over by the water and gunshots that are coming through the woods. Um, and I'm no engineer, um, but I would say that uh wood is not an amplifier. Of noises. Uh, it would be something that would be more akin to a really dull uh sound deadener. Uh, so if anyone was actually concerned that they would like to have less noise. Uh, directed in their way or having some noise from a gun range to go in their general direction. I would think that they would be for something that was three sided, so if it has a roof. It has a pad and it has walls. On the sides and it has walls in the rear, then that would mean that a lot of that concussive force would be. Absorbed and if I'm correct, if I saw the drawing was. Uh, that the opening would be directed towards the deeper part of the property, which is woods. And the back of it would be facing the area where one of my neighbors says that they're hearing a lot of noise, so. Getting. Being in opposition to a project that would actually stop some of the noise, not make it silent, that's ridiculous, it's a it's a gun club. Um, I would say that this is something that's going to be beneficial, it should take some of the crack out. Uh, of some of those shots and uh. Just think that uh if we look at some things that exist right now, again, I'm not an engineer. Uh, I can't go into any real super details on how you mitigate sound, but. Uh, you drive on highways all the time and they use wood uh on the backs of neighborhoods to stop. Uh, the roar of highways. Uh, does it stop the noise of the highway? Nope, not at all. It deadens it some, it takes some of the uh severity of it out. I'm pretty sure that if you bought a property that was along the highway and had one of those acoustic barriers, you would hear. Uh, the trucks go by, you would hear uh the cars going by all year round, day and night. But they put those up because it does reduce uh some of the decibels and it doesn't take a an engineering study. Uh, to get uh behind something like this, that it's just uh. Not trying to be offensive to anyone, it's a common sense that if you were to shelter that to some degree and it's not a house. It's not a case of build it and they will come. I just can't imagine. With all of the gun ranges that I've seen that if we had a shed with a pad and a couple of walls that would knock some of the sound out, not make it silent. That somehow or another, there's just going to be a horde of people that are going to show up. And the comment. That really bothered me earlier and I'm not trying to be personal with anyone, is that to be concerned that the police would show up? Uh, look at me. Uh, I'm glad that I have an opportunity to meet the police in the local areas. It's a chance that uh maybe if they're coming into my neighborhood, I could talk to them. Uh, this is a good thing. Uh, to have the police engaged and if anyone's concerned about active shooters, I would want the police here. That's a good thing, that makes me feel safe that the police are here. I'd like to see a lot more police. Um, so that's a that's a good thing, that's a benefit uh to all of us to have. Uh, the local police departments coming in the area and if they could do it and it's not making as much noise, I'm all for that too. Uh, so uh, I'd just like to say uh, thanks for welcoming me to the neighborhood. I really like living here. I'm in the basement, of course, um, but uh. I I really like it here and uh I would hope that uh we could find a way that we could all. Uh. Find a way forward and say that uh this is a good thing, because if we do nothing, it's just going to be as loud. As it ever was, if you do nothing, so if we stop uh what these people are trying to do now. Then what you have is what you have. If you add something to it, it's not going to bring extra members or extra crowds or anything like that, it's just going to knock it down a little bit. So just being anti-gun range. This is not going to work. In fact, I think it'll be a little quieter at my house if they did build a structure over there. I'll still hear the duck hunters. There's a where I sit, I'm right where Route nine dumps out and I hear them every morning. I that was one of the first things that I noticed uh when I moved here. And I thought it might have been the gun range, but it's not. So I found out. But uh, thanks again, thanks for welcoming me to the neighborhood uh and uh, thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Isabel, do we have more participants tonight? I see Sue up here twice, so maybe we've.
Yeah, Sue is the only one um that I have not yet been able to um hear. So I I've unmuted both of the Sues that I have on the meeting. Sue, can you unmute?
Okay, can you, can you hear me?
Now I can, great.
Okay, so I I will say from. Listening to this this evening, I'd like to make a few statements. One is that. Um. The sound has been a lot less in the last since this permit was filed pre-COVID. I work in the, I work along the shoreline at a number of properties. On a regular basis and it used to be that I could tell it was three thirty because somebody had gotten off of work and had gone to the gun club. To file their high caliber. Um. Semi-automatic. I think it's good to have a gun club. I think it's better if people can hit a target than not, but. I also um think that some of the statements that were originally in the permit application. Were not exactly correct, um, statements like that. This this building, when it was going to be open on three sides, would reduce sound now. There are, there are sound dampening things, there's a company called Acoustablock and I think that um. If you put sound panels on the three walls, I think it would make a significant improvement. The comment that firing into a berm. That's above the water table. Um, is a non-issue is not exactly correct because. Many gun clubs. Now reclaim lead. Because it has been an issue in some cases. Um. I I agree with the person who said that this doesn't expand the use, but if you. Invite additional police departments, then I believe you are expanding the use. Um, the other question, the other issue that came up, which I thought was valid one in this area is. Um, I'm not aware that there are any toilet facilities on this property. Um, and it does seem like a reasonable point. And with that. Um, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sue, and can we just have your address as well for the record?
Uh, my address is, I'm in Main Street in Buxton.
Okay, great, thank you. Hey Isabel, how are we doing on participants?
Um, that was the last person that I had with their hand raised.
Great. Uh, yes, back to the board, Jeff Broschew.
I'm chair, I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? Jennifer, I see your hand up. And I second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing done, I'll call for a vote. Matt?
Yeah.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Uh, Jeff Broschew?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
No vote yes as well. Okay, so the public hearing is now closed. Okay. Um. Back to the applicants. Brian, I was keeping a list myself. Um. I'd like to prioritize. Some of the items that are. You know, of importance tonight for what we're dealing with, but I think given your opportunity, you can also address some of the other. Topics that came up such as restrooms, um, we might as well while the public's here. Um, so regarding, I have hours um increase of. Use as far as numbers of people that are going to be using the range. Um, specifically relating to everyone keeps raising the point of. Opening it up to other police departments. Um, we heard about lead several times. Obviously, we heard about sound frequently, so I'll turn it over to you right now.
All right, so just a point of order, ma'am chair, uh, as far as time wise, are we doing okay? Do I need to? Just hit those four points you talked about or at this point or. Um, as far as the stuff they anticipated impact of the structure, that's what we're trying to address is those particular questions, is that correct?
So you're probably because our agenda does have a time limit on it, right? Um, we frequently do continue on at this point in the evening. Um, so. Board member. It is ten.
If I may through the chair, ask a opportunity to be able to at least. Respond to all the questions and all these people have been on this Zoom call for hours, at this point I anticipate too, I'd like to be able to do that. Um, for for us at least, if that's okay through the board.
I I know, I'm not seeing any board members raise their hand in disagreement of that, so let's go right ahead.
Great, so yes, we have a bathroom uh inside the clubhouse with a combination lock and if we have any special events, we'll bring in a portable toilet, so. Those concerns are taken care of. Um, as stated before, previously, we have the Old Orchard Beach Police Department. Um, that was currently using the range in the past, um, and we had intentions of opening up. Um. Options for the Saco and Bitterford, but if that's something that the board doesn't feel um is appropriate, certainly we would um not offer those. The that opportunity uh in the future because it hasn't been proposed right now, it's just a proposal and a thought process um through as we go through our um our plan. As far as the increase in use, I think that addresses that. And it, the number of shooting positions, we already talked about multiple times, it's going to be the same number of shooting positions that are already in existence. Um, as far as hours go of our operations, uh, the plan is to. Continue to have the same hours of operation that we have, so there'll be no increase in hours um as stated in our in our packet as well. Uh, as far as sound goes, um, we did provide a sound study, um, there's a lot of information there. Uh, it's available on page number forty four of the packet. Um, it goes pretty into depth on a whole bunch of different things as far as mitigation goes and other options. Um, it's it is all in the documentation and that's part of our our packet that we put together. Um, so hopefully if we, it's reviewed, it it is there. Um, part of having the structure is so we can help with sound, if we don't have the structure, we can't do anything else with sound. Um, to to help mitigate that, so I think that's really the point of this, one of the the three big points of this project. Um, is being able to be better neighbors by reducing our sound, reducing our impact in the neighborhood by putting up the structure. If I don't do that without putting the whole structure inside an enclosed building, um, there's not a whole lot of other options we can do. Uh, to do that, so hopefully the board will understand that's that's part of this this project. Um, are there any other questions? Um. That I haven't addressed specifically that we needed to to hit?
Well, Brian, curious on one item that um came up several times with the lead. Is this enclosure going to change where the shell casings are falling? They be falling in the structure now and instead of out in the field?
Yeah, so shell casings and lead are are different things, but absolutely, um, so shell casings and brass um would be like the common terms. Um, so that would just, it would make things actually easier to clean up uh by having a hard surface, um, you could just take up room, sweep everything, throw it in the trash can. Uh, right now we have picking tools and rakes and we do annual cleanups in the fall and spring and winter um to deal with that, so it would actually make things a little bit easier as far as doing cleanup goes. Uh, more efficient as well.
Board members, any other questions from public hearing you'd like to bring up again?
Madam Chair, this is Joyce. I I'm I'm looking for the sound study and I don't see it, page four of my materials has drawings of the proposed building.
Look at page forty four of the packet. Page forty four, item um. Five point. I have three screens going, I'm sorry. It's a five point three one.
Brian, I'm not seeing any, maybe Isabel can help us with putting something up on a screen.
Hopefully.
Yeah, we must have different page numberings.
While we're looking for that, Jennifer, did you have a question?
Um, I did, just that uh Brian answered about the about where the shell casings fall, but not with the what they actually do to mitigate or clean up the lead. Um, that ends up in the berm at the other end.
So the lead is addressed um actually in our environmental environmental management plan. Um, that's part of our range operation, so we just kind of use the NRA standards that are already out there. Um, and actually end up actually bringing back some of the lead. Um, that's out there and then we also follow the best practices recommended um by EPA as well. Um, as far as maintain the soil clemencies and stuff. Through regular maintenance.
Great, thank you. Jeff Broschew?
I'm chair, I think it's important, I know we have a lot of material and it's still getting late, but. I I don't believe that the 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 lead is much of a topic for our conversation, the the. Site amendment is for a proposed structure. The use is continuing as it was and where the lead is going. Um, would be outside the scope of this application, I believe, so we just have to be careful not to let that, you know, sway some of our thoughts. It's really on the 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 building. You know, the expansion of use and we have to be careful because some of their their activities are protected by the state statute. Um, but obviously where it's a non-conforming use in Saco, we have to make sure it's not expanding uh in protection of the neighbors. Um, and then sound, you know, there's not an increase in sound. Um. So I just wanted to try to remind us, I'll try to stay focused and hopefully we can, you know, come to some. Closure tonight.
Definitely, Jeff, and I'm the one that led us down that road, but only because I was thinking in terms of the pollution of the shell casings being. Captured by the structure versus just being out in the field.
No, absolutely, and I think that that's a valid, it's a benefit, right? It's a beneficial point. That at least they're brass, I was what they're calling it, I guess, is, you know, now contained on a on a floor, which would be much easier to pick it up from than. The lawn or the dirt that it must be falling into from the picnic table, so there's obviously an ease of cleanup on on that regard. Which would be a plus for the building slab in my eyes. Thank you.
Um, any luck on the sound study, Isabel?
Um, I apologize, I I'm not seeing any sound study in the materials that we have. It's not available to me.
I've got a fifty six page document I'm looking at, it's, it was page uh forty four um that was submitted.
Brian, you're looking at a a packet that you created and submitted?
Yes, it was submitted.
Not one downloaded from the city website?
Correct.
There may be a disconnect in what we have in front of us versus what you have. Um.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I'm not in the office, so I have access to what we have digitally. Yeah. And unfortunately, I'm not in the office, so I don't have access to what we have digitally.
Okay. So Board Members, we've had a thorough public hearing. We've gone through a lot of this material tonight. I personally would love to see the sound study. I think it's very important. We are approaching quarter past 10. So just giving us some options here. We can certainly continue through this, not seeing that sound study. We could table this and revisit it once we have a chance to look at that. Listen for feedback from Board Members.
Madam Chair, this is Matt.
Yep, Matt.
I think I agree with a lot of what's been said by some of the colleagues here. Sound is clearly an important piece of this. And I, I think it's appropriate that we have proper sound information on this. And it's unfortunate that if the applicant had that and it, and we haven't been able to review that. I think it's only appropriate that we table for the discussion until that information is received.
Other Board Members, I think I saw a couple of their hands go up. Jeff Broshu?
Thank you. Yeah, I would tend to agree. I think it's unfortunate it wasn't included, particularly if they had a sound study done. It's a great baseline for, you know, our thought process and reference moving forward. There are a couple of other areas I'd like to, you know, if we are going to table, at least let the applicant know. So that maybe the applicant and staff could work through things a little bit. I would like to see in the conditions of approval. Like I said, number eight, if we could just spell out their hours of operation now as they are, that 9:00 AM to sunset as well as the abbreviated hours in the summer, the, those three months, just so that it's documented. I also think it would be important to note the number of shooting stalls, lanes, whatever the official term is that they have in, in current benches, that that will match and should be presented in a condition of approval so that we know how many shooting stalls this new building will contain. And obviously, the sound study was good. I just want to make sure that we have done a diligent job in covering our bases of the, the non-conforming use and a non-expansion of it, so that we're doing a structure to enhance the sound mitigation of the use and that we have enough just existing documentation they've willingly provided that is clearly spelled out in the condition of approval so that we can move forward and have done our diligence for, for the neighboring community. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Board Members, any other thoughts? Jennifer?
Just to second what, what Jeff has just said and maybe get clarification. Are you looking for the specific, when they talk about reduced Sunday hours and reduced summer hours? Are you wanting to see specific hours of operation? Because I'm not sure what reduced means in the scope of things.
Well, I guess my understanding is that their normal hours as presented were 9:00 AM till sunset, which would be basically seven days a week all year round. But it sounds like in an effort historically to be a good neighbor because of one of their butters that had some sort of a, of a church service, they've agreed to not have shooting hours on Sunday from noon time until sunset, if I understood correctly. And I'm, I'm just basically asking what they presented and is held within our packet in other locations to be slid over and included into our findings of facts or conditions of approval so that we have an agreed documentation of what their hours of operation are. It just shows good faith that we've, you know, they're not expanding their use. They're not asking to go from sunrise to sunset now. We're not increasing the number of stalls, so we're not increasing the number of shooting positions or people that could participate at the same time. And I just think that helps to kind of cross all the, the Ts and dot the Is in the process. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Not seeing any other Board Members. Brian, I'll let you speak to those topics.
Yes, just a couple of points. So it was a February 10th, 2021 letter dated. There's 56 pages that we had submitted on the sound information. I do have one of my Board Members on that can do a screen share and give that information so the board can review it tonight. If that, if they choose to do that. So it was submitted. It should be there right on the city website as well. So that's there. I just don't know what the disconnect was. I'm actually finding it. As far as the other sound stuff, I think it was already brought up and it was provided in our packet as well. But the state statute 3011 Shooting Range Protection Act covers a lot of limiting factors on hours and operations. So I think that really needs to be looked at a little bit too, to make sure the board will be in compliance before doing anything like that. As make sure it's where it applies with the state law and the statutes. So that's really important as well. Given the, the current city of SOCO firearms ordinances for new shooting ranges. They do specify there's just no shooting allowed between the hours of sunset and sunrise. Those were current as of 2018. I understand that we were grandfathered existing and continuous use since the late 19, excuse me, early 1950s. So that probably shouldn't, you know, apply being a new thing. But the current regulations are certainly more generous in the hours or a lot more expensive than the hours that we offer our current membership at this point. That does show that we've done good faith effort for the community, for our neighbors in the past and continue on Sundays and throughout the summer months, June, July and August of operating at a limited capacity for hours to be respectful of the neighborhood and the neighbors. So hopefully that's taken into consideration as well. Is there any other questions I could order, ask, answer for the board in particular? And would it be appropriate to do a screen share with one of my other Board Members online at this point or no?
Correctly. Personally, I feel like it would be best practice, given the attention that this item has received. If we wait and have Board Members have the opportunity to review that sound study after today and also members of the public, because if we didn't see it, they didn't see it. And so maybe it's something that we table and revisit, but I'll turn to other Board Members to see how everyone else feels. I just know that at this hour, we typically aren't at our best and I'd rather give it some full review. Joyce?
Yeah, if this is a 56-page document, I, I don't think we should start reading it at 10:20 at night. I, I don't think that's doing anyone a service. And I understand it's not all the 56 pages. But it seems reasonable to table, be able to review these documents and come back to a subsequent meeting fairly soon.
Okay. And Bob, when would we be able to see these folks again?
Given the situation, I see no reason why this could not be on the board's very next agenda, which would be May 18th.
Okay. And that would give time to make sure we have that material, materials on the city website properly. And then we have some time to review it. So, okay. Okay, Board Members, back to you for a direction on this tonight. Jennifer?
I'm not sure that I can make it appropriate, but I'd like to, to move to, to table decision-making on this matter until a future meeting.
Great. Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Joyce. I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Yes.
Would they be open to, you know, modifying their motion to target it for the next agenda item? Not just a future meeting, but the next agenda meeting, please?
Absolutely. So I would make a motion to table this until the next planning board agenda.
Which is May 18th?
May 18th, yeah. Joyce, and I'll, and my second, assuming, assuming the materials are provided to us, of course.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Matt?
Yeah.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Jeff Broshu?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Okay, so we've moved this, tabled it to our May 18th meeting. Brian, I did see your hand up. Did you have a question that we can answer before we leave tonight?
Yeah, I guess we're just a point of order more so. It'd be tabled and then open for just those continued items that we're looking to, to address as far as the technical error, not having the packet in front of the planning board.
So we'd be tabling our, our decision on it overall. So, and looking for that material to make its way into our packet for that meeting. And we'd be essentially picking up from here on our conversation and, you know, moving ahead towards a decision on it.
Thank you.
Yes, would it be a public hearing again? I mean, would that include a public hearing?
So Bob, I can chime in, but I'll also let you answer. But my understanding is that typically it is up to the board. If we'd like to reopen a public hearing, is that right, Bob? Would it be able to be advertised as one this?
Yeah, well, I, I would say if the board had anticipated 20 minutes ago at the closure of the public hearing that, that this may be being continued to a future meeting, the board may have chosen to simply suspend the public hearing. There's no reason for the 18th that the agenda cannot, there's no reason that it can't read that there will be a public hearing. And if the board would like to reserve that right to hold a public hearing on the 18th, if you would advise staff right now, then that's the way we'll advertise that agenda.
And, and one way or another, Bob, the public's still able to submit comments prior to.
But always, anytime, yes.
And Jeff Broshu, I see your hand.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm not really sure at this point if we should reserve it or post it as a public hearing. Depending on how much data there is in that information and what comments we receive, we may choose to reopen it. But at this point, you know, we've started our 30-day clock on giving them a ruling because we closed the public hearing and found the application complete. So I would say let's just move forward and, you know, get the information into our packet for review. And if we feel that it's appropriate, we can continue this discussion. And if we feel it's appropriate to let additional public comment and we can reopen the public hearing. But I don't think we should post it and force our hand that it has to be a public hearing at the next meeting.
And, and the board can always receive public comment even though it doesn't come under the, the, the heading of quote unquote, public hearing.
And Bob, that's in the form of both written submissions prior to our meeting. And then also we can choose at the meeting during the Zoom to receive a public comment.
That's correct. Yes.
Madam Chair, Matt here.
Yes, Matt.
I, I agree with Jeff. I see this as it's unfortunate the information wasn't there, but we're requesting additional information to either be satisfied or not. So I agree with Jeff.
Any other Board Members? Jeff Grossman, yeah?
I would think that if we're going to reopen the public hearing, it would only be for discussion on any new materials received and not to rehash what we've already heard today.
Okay. And, and Jeff Grossman, I think what Jeff Broshu was saying was, correct me if I'm wrong, but to not advertise it as a public hearing. But however, we all are under the understanding right now that we can still receive public comment both prior to the meeting and at the meeting. So.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Any other comments tonight on this item, Jeff Broshu?
I was going to make a motion to adjourn.
Great. Is there a second? Okay, without a formal vote, thank you, everyone, for your time this evening. Thank you, Brian and Paul. We'll see you again on 18th.
Thank you all. Really appreciate your time and sticking with us tonight.
Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you, Isabel. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, folks. Good night.